Good evening, everyone, to the Fitchburg Common Council meeting to the February 13, 2024. I am calling this meeting, I am calling to order. So the first thing that we are going to do is please stand up for the place of allegiance. So next, I would like ask for a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor Alder Allen.
Oh, I cannot wait.
Mayor Ratafratta.
Here.
Alder Gerhardt.
Here.
Alder Herbst.
Here.
Alder Jentzer.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Alder Strassmann.
Here.
Alder Udell.
Here.
Alder Wheeler.
Here.
You have a call, Mayor.
Thank you. So next in our agenda is item number four, Public Appearing for Non-Agenda Items and New Appointments. So tonight, we have a couple of... So tonight, we have a proclamation, and then we have two public hearings. And so I want to acknowledge all of you here and say thank you for being here tonight. This is a, you know, we have a lot of people that have registered to speak tonight. And we have several items in the agenda. This is a long agenda. So what I would like to do is that we are going to do our proclamation first, then the public meeting on the amendment to the Comprehensive Plan and to the ARPA Investment Plan. All the, I will ask all the police facility comments to be whole until later in the agenda when the resolution is on the table. Due to the number, we have more than 50 people to register to speak tonight. So we are going to hold, limiting each person to a minute and a half, okay? So we can have the opportunity to everyone to speak up tonight. So one of the other things I want to remind you is that, you know, so this is a public meeting, and I welcome civic engagement in all my meetings. I expect that resident and participant will express a different opinion in a respectful tone to each other. I will not allow any disrespectful comment, insults, swearing, yelling to our, the people that are present today, to the council member, staff, or the mayor. So please, let's try to be civil tonight. We can disagree, but let's do it with respect. So we are going to go through the logistic of the meeting tonight.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chad Brecklin. I'm the city administrator. As the mayor mentioned, I'd like to just cover some of the logistical items for the evening. You may have seen as you came in, our City Hall and Fire Department staff are assisting with registration for those wishing to provide public comment, as well as coordinating the testimony and room capacities. We ask that you follow instructions and information that our staff provides this evening. If you have registered to speak, please note the number you are provided at the time you registered to speak, as that number will be utilized to call people forward for their public testimony. When providing public testimony, please state your name and address, including city, prior to starting your comments, please. The overflow rooms are located down the hall to our right in the community center. There are staff in the hallway that will help guide folks to those particular areas. The meeting is being streamed in our overflow rooms, and there is just as a bit of information about a 30-second to one-minute delay with the stream in relation to the live meeting here. Staff will, as I mentioned, be in the hallway to assist folks moving back and forth between the rooms here at City Hall, as well as the community center. Please keep our hallways between the community center and the council chambers clear, unless you are moving between the two rooms to provide public testimony, or using the restroom, or exiting the building. And we do appreciate your cooperation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. So first, we are going to do the mayoral proclamation. We are recognizing and honoring February 2024 as a National Black History Month, whereas National Black History Month is celebrated every February in recognition of achievements by Black Americans and all people of African descent in the United States, and...
Whereas in the face of incredible prejudice and hardship, African-Americans have enhanced and advanced every aspect of American life through courage, determination, faith, and resolve. Their fight for equality, representation, and respect motivates us to continue working for a more promising, peaceful, and hopeful future for every American, and...
Whereas Black History Month encourages Americans to celebrate the countless scientific, artistic, economic, entrepreneurial, intellectual contributions to Black Americans, and to recognize the collective struggle for full citizenship, equity, inclusion, and justice that Black Americans have endured throughout the nation's history, and...
Whereas the Black History Month 2024 theme, African-American and the Arts, honors the many impacts Black Americans have had on visual arts, literature, fashion, language, culinary, music, and cultural movements. African-American art is infused with African, Caribbean, and Black American lived experiences, and...
Whereas the city of Fitchburg continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world, and...
Whereas the city of Fitchburg is proud to honor the history and contributions of African-Americans in our community, and reaffirms its commitment to working alongside community leaders to address inequities experienced by Black residents, and to support their overall success and well-being now and tomorrow.
So now, therefore, in recognition of Black community, past and present in our community, I, Julia Ratafratta, Mayor of the City of Fitchburg, Wisconsin, along with the Common Council, do now proclaim February 2024 to be Black History Month in Fitchburg. I encourage all Fitchburg residents to use the month of February as an opportunity to explore Black history and gain a greater appreciation for the richness and depth of Black Americans' contribution. Proclaim this 13th day of February 2024. So now, I'm going to call the people that, we're going to take a picture. Okay. So next, we are going to continue with the meeting. And I will open the public hearing for the ordinance 2023-0-19 and Plan Commission Resolution, PCR-05-23, adopting and recommending the Fall 2023 Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, Amending Map 4.3 Future Land Use Map and Figure 71, Future Land Use Plan Map in the North Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plan for Property Location Along Lacy Road, specifically from IC, that is industrial commercial, LDR, low-density residential, and PRC, Park and Conservancy, to IG, industrial general, LDR, low-density residential, and Parks and Conservancy. So we have here a couple of people that registered to speak. The first one is, I will call Charles Stern. He wishes to speak in opposition. Where is Charles? Isn't he here? Okay. Okay, so, yeah, okay. So next one is Brett Pariso. He's here. And he wishes to speak in opposition and answer questions. Okay. Brett, you're ready? Oh, and you have one minute and a half.
Yeah. My screen, it says it's sharing on Zoom? No?
Yes, he's ready.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I live at 6259 Summit View Drive, which maybe should be called Industrial View Drive. The first photo I show on the handout shows my view from my window of the pit reclamation plan. And you can see the berm in the front is insufficient to hide what's going on behind it. This berm is about 18 feet tall. If you do the math and push the berm further backwards, the berm has to correspond when you get higher. It's this simple math. If you know the elevation of the neighborhood, which we do, and you know the elevation of the floor of the gravel pit, you can easily calculate the height of the berm. So if we zip through the pictures here, this is a picture of the berm looking to the north, and you can see a large plateau, as I call it, or a mesa, of fill being put up in the top right-hand corner with additional piles on top of that. This is about three times higher than the homes. And if that's going to be the level of the reclaimed pit, there is no berm high enough to hide the view. I like to emphasize, since we're getting short on time, we neighbors are not opposed to an industrial park, but we are definitely opposed if the berm is insufficiently tall to see it or hide the view. The last photo here shows our proposal of maintaining the one-third of the overburden hill within the green space. The difficulty with this plan is that the backside would have to be backfilled at a slope of three to one per clint, and that would cut into the border of the IG Park. For this reason, we request that we move the border back enough to do this plan. Thank you for your time. That was very fast.
Thank you, Charles. So Charles, Brett. So Charles is here or no? No? Okay. Charles Stern. Okay, Charles, come to the microphone, please. You have one minute and a half.
Good evening. Charles Stern of 2712 Turnstone Circle. We're at the second house in the whole development. We like it. But I have noticed in the proceed, the request that the need to change the zoning was for more factory land. About 10 minutes of research on the Happy Computer shows that in November, all the mayors of Dane County got together for a program. And the mayor of Stone Prairie, I am convinced the city cannot be viable if it cannot have housing for its people, and growth is coming in Dane County. The mayor of Madison says that 3,000 to 4,000 more units in Dane County need to be built, because we're that short that much, calling the housing crisis the defining problem of our region. Notice it's not the lack of factory space. It's housing as a primary. And this, I'm against this proposal, because it knocks out, you know, potential housing from Fitchburg. And we bought the place not expecting factories there.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
So next, I am calling to, what is it, Karen Sager. She's online. Karen, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. My name is Karen Sager. I live at 6259 Summit View Drive in Fitchburg. It's been said that a house is made of bricks and beams, and a home is made of hopes and dreams. And buying a home is arguably still part of the American dream. What are some other things that come to mind when you think of the American dream? Well, there are some examples. In the North Stoner Prairie Original Development Plan, there were hiking trails, there was a sledding hill, there was a soccer field, and what could be more American? Baseball diamond. When a six-acre growth woodland preserve was destroyed, we could do nothing. The preservation of these quarry features, all revised with, all were destroyed with the revised plan. We looked away when our dreams of hiking, sledding, playing soccer, and baseball in our neighborhood all went away. Now, the only thing remaining between us and the expanded industrial park is a berm large enough to block the noise, the light, and the undesirable views that come with the proposed revised plan. We can't look away this time. It will take time to negotiate a proper plan, one that allows the industrial park to be built and the quarry vesta residents to not be bothered by its presence. We have conceded enough of the dreams that were sold to us in the original development plan. Members of the Common Council, we respectfully request that you do the right thing and vote no on the current revised proposed plan. Thank you.
Thank you. So next, I have other register, Sharon Stern. She wishes to register only in opposition of the above matter of this. Then I have Matthew Roberts. He wishes to register only in opposition. And I have Clint Wenninger. He wishes to speak in support of this. Deanna, do you want to speak too, or you're going to wait for planning?
I will just be here to answer any questions.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, Clint Wenninger with Payne and Dolan. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. The reason we are here tonight is, a couple months ago, we got referred back to Plan Commission. The reason our project got referred back to Plan Commission was to incorporate a lot of the feedback that we received from city staff and from the neighbors. What does some of that include? Well, we increased the green space on our proposal to over 12 acres, which was twice as much. We also included adding a berm and landscaping in that green space to help as a transition between the residential and the proposed industrial uses to the east. These enhancements would help address those concerns of the neighbors. As far as line of sight, we included some of that information in our neighbor meeting, which I believe is in your packet, and you can see how that line of sight would be addressed. But also allow for separation of stormwater and no through traffic and those other benefits to the neighborhood as well. So, but we did agree, talking to the neighbors at our neighbor meeting at Plan Commission, and I think even the last time here at Common Council, to meet with the neighbors when we, prior to developing that final reclamation plan, to get their input into what exactly that berm and that landscaping looks like. So we helped design that with their thoughts and input in mind to help meet the needs of the community. Thank you very much, and I will be here during the other part if you have any questions later. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then we have online Bill Buglas. He's only registered to answer questions. So now I am closing the public hearing for this ordinance. And next, we are moving to, I open another public hearing. It's for the Resolution R-16. What?
We had one more person that wanted to speak on that first topic.
Okay, I don't have the registration form.
What number are you? 29?
What is your name?
Sarah. Sarah Jetson. 29?
Okay, can you, okay, can you speak and then fill out the form? So I want to reopen the public hearing.
My name is Sarah Jetson. My address is 2721 Turnstone Circle, and I wanted to speak in opposition of the proposal. So as some of the other neighbors have said, when we first moved to the area, we were told that there was going to be a certain development plan that has now been pretty significantly changed. And I think most of the neighbors are not happy about a lot of the changes. I was at the last meeting. A number of people spoke up against the proposal, and then the council decided to vote and approve that plan. And we've been told every step of the way that you will continue to keep us in the loop, that Payne and Dolan will continue to talk with us and get our feedback. And we feel that that really just hasn't happened. I feel that the council has been intentionally drawing this process out, just making us come to meeting after meeting, knowing that a lot of us work full-time jobs, and that it's really hard for us to come to a lot of meetings to speak about this issue. So I thought it was really important for me to just say that I am in opposition of the proposal, and I would really like the council to support those of us who live here in the city of Fitchburg, and not just the people who represent Payne and Dolan, who don't live and vote and work here. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have another one?
That is Sarah's.
Okay.
These are register only for Payne and Dolan, or for the company?
Okay, so we have Julie Wolf. She is registered only to, in opposition. Benjamin Bass, he registered only in support. And Christine Richlin, she wishes to register only in opposition. Okay, so now I am officially closing the public hearing. Next, we move to the next public hearing is, I will open the public hearing for the Resolution R-16-24, Public Hearing of Mayors Proposed 2024 Updated to the, Update to the ARPA TIT Closure Investment Plan. Do we have any register? No? No? Okay, no one is here to speak on this, so I am closing the public hearing. So next, we move to the consent agenda. So I need a motion.
I move approval.
Folks in favor of the consent?
Pardon me. I would like to pull number eight out, just to discuss briefly.
Okay, eight. Okay. Folks in favor of the consent agenda except for number eight? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so what is about number eight?
Well, so the council will recall that this item came up to the council just a couple of months ago, and the council voted it down. And there was discussion that this needed to go back to, well, first of all, the discussion was that we weren't going to entertain this again until after the Southdale Neighborhood Plan had been updated. So I don't understand why it's coming back, given the fact that the Southdale Neighborhood Plan hasn't yet been updated. But beyond that, there has been zero outreach to the neighborhood that this was even coming back again. So I think this is not an appropriate thing for us to be taking up at this time. Now, Deanna is not out there right now. I don't know where she went. And we may have, we may have, we may have to legally do something with this because an application was submitted. But I just wanted on the record that there's been zero neighborhood outreach since the council voted this down previously.
Deanna, can you come to the microphone? And Alder Allen has a couple of questions.
How can I help?
Well, does this Rimrock Road Plan Commission Resolution, does this have to be acted on?
They have reapplied as a, as an entirely new application. So it's, it's entirely different from what it was before. Of course, council doesn't have to act upon it, but there is a new application that has been submitted.
So we aren't, we don't have, like, there are some things that are submitted to, to the city that we have a timeframe in which we have to act on them. This is not one of those?
This is not one of those.
Excellent. In that case, I will move to deny referring this to the Plan Commission.
I made the call. Okay. Any other comment?
There's no second.
Huh? No? Okay. There is no second? No? Okay, so we are...
I move to refer to Plan Commission.
Okay. There is a second for that? Do you second?
Yeah.
Okay, second. Okay. So it was referred back to Plan Commission. Folks in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. The motion carry. Okay. Okay, so next, we move to the Administrator Report.
Hello, I've got four items for the council this evening, and those attending the meeting or otherwise watching. The Senior Center is hosting an event on Friday, February 16, at 1:00 PM in recognition of Black History Month. Public Works is hosting a public information meeting regarding the 2024 Street Resurfacing Project on February 26 at 5:30 PM in the council chambers. The South Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plan Survey is available through February 26 and can, can be completed by going to the city's website under the Neighborhood Plan section of the Planning and Zoning page. And finally, summer seasonal positions have been added to the city's website under the Job Opening section within the Human Resources Department.
Okay, thank you. Any question for Chad? Nope? Okay, thank you, Chad. So now, in our agenda, we are in item seven, so we are moving to Commission and Committees Report. We are going to Plan Commission. Gabriela.
I move approval of ordinance 2023-019, adopting and recommending the Fall 2023 Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, Amending Map 4.3 Future Land Use Plan Map and Figure 71 Future Land Use Plan Map in the North Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plan for Property Location Along Lacy Road, specifically from IC, industrial commercial, LDR, low-density residential, and PNC, parks and conservancy, to IG, industrial general, LDR, low-density residential, and PNC, parks and conservancy.
Second.
Okay, Gabriela, can you explain?
Yes. So Plan Commission took this up in October, on October 17, and it did pass, but there was a lot of testimony from the neighbors. So Payne and Dolan set up that Neighborhood Plan Meeting, so Neighborhood Meeting, which you saw in the packet. And after that meeting, they changed the proposal. And that was brought back to Plan Commission on December 19, and it was approved. To kind of give you some idea of what that looks like, they returned to council because they expanded the green space. It went from six acres to 12 acres. And they also discussed with the, with the neighbors the reclamation plan. So right now, it's a quarry, an active quarry. In a couple of years, it should be at the end of its life, so they'll need to reclaim the space. So that overburden, that's kind of sitting there, that is, is by the plan used to reclaim the space, and they don't know exactly how much will be needed to, to fix that area. But they talked about wanting to preserve as much as possible, plus the, using the vegetation to screen. But in terms of what the, the reason for the change, they don't plan to complete that full neighborhood. So what they decided instead to do was to finish that cul-de-sac, so finish out the homes on that street, shift the Parks and Conservancy over, and then add a little bit of space to the industrial area that was now the quarry but will be reclaimed into an industrial space. And this is in part driven by economic development team at Fitchburg, because there's a desire to have bigger industrial lots to attract businesses, and also maybe expand businesses that currently exist in the city, which is why it's being proposed for that potential rezone. And that is the reason for the change. To be clear, to be clear about the process, oh, I'm sorry, one other note, that the green space that's there, that parks... that Parks and Conservancy space, the intention is to have a, basically a corridor that goes down into the South Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plan. So there is a continuous, obviously you have to cross the street, but there's a continuous area. And then in terms of next steps, just to clarify that this is the minor comp plan amendment, so this is just a depth, changing the future land use. Next would be a comprehensive development plan, followed by a preliminary plat, final plat rezone, architectural design process, all of which Payne and Dolan is going to talk about with the neighbors. So those details about noise and, and how the vegetation looks and the berm height, all of that stuff will be discussed at a later date, assuming this passes. And also, just to clarify too for the neighbors, there's concern about like the noise of the facility. But that type of facility that's coming is going to be a lot less noisy than what currently exists in the quarry. And any sort of heavy machinery requires a conditional use permit from the Plan Commission. And I don't think there's any desire to have that type of facility come to Pittsburgh. We're looking for something like a, like a Promega, like a Sub-Zero, good industrial partner for the city. And that's my summary.
Did Plan Commission approve?
Yes.
Okay, so Mike Zimmerman, do you want to add anything else to this project?
Do you want me to talk long or just kind of give a quick summary? I'll just give a quick overview.
Take a half hour, Mike.
Okay, no. This is a, the quarry's a remnant of our former town days, and we're ready to reclaim those to kind of productive uses within our urban service area. As Alder Gabriela pointed out, there is a real need in Pittsburgh for clean industrial, clean manufacturing, light industrial. To find a ten-plus acre site, we're really in short supply, not only for new prospects that are looking, but also for existing Pittsburgh businesses that are looking to expand. Payne and Dolan has already been a great partner. The Promega facility there, the Chappelle Manufacturing Facility, we worked quietly with Promega to acquire the land to locate that facility, coming probably in about a year, south of Cottonwood. We worked with Payne and Dolan to acquire, for General Beverage, to acquire a seven-acre site. And then north of the forty acres that Payne and Dolan has right along Lacy Road, we already know who the known quantity is there. Sub-Zero owns that thirty-five, thirty-six acre parcel. So I know sometimes it's, people are fearful because of the unknown, but I think there's a lot more known as far as some of the entities that we're working with and the types of companies that we would expect. We're talking the Promegas, the Sub-Zeros, the General Beverages. There's another Pittsburgh company that's looking for ten-plus acres. Can't kind of say who that one is, is there? But this might be a home for them as well. So we're not only trying to take care of new prospects coming to Pittsburgh, but existing businesses. And I will say, we've encouraged the staff, Payne and Dolan, to continue to engage with the neighborhood in a conversation and a dialogue. I think they've already made progress with increasing the environmental corridor, having that north-south connection and everything. And I think they've expressed a willingness to work with the residents in the neighborhood when it comes time for that reclamation leading to the CDP. And I will just say that Pittsburgh has a track record of quality development. And as we work through that review process with Deanna and her team in the planning department, you know, our focus will be on how are they compatible, you know, as a neighbor, neighboring uses in that area, looking at lighting, noise, and screening and things like that. So I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, any question for Michael, Deanna? No? No? So you're ready to vote? Okay, so...
Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
No.
Alder Gerhardt?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Jetser?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
No.
Alder Wheeler?
No.
Five-three, motion carries.
Okay, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you. Five, two, three. Okay. So next, we move to public, the Board of Public Works. So Dave, are you going to be in charge of this or Bill?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll do it. I'll move approval of ordinance twenty-twenty-four oh one, amending chapter sixty-eight to extend thirty-five mile an hour speed limit on Lacy Road.
Did Public Works approve? Oh, I need a second.
Public Works approved.
Second. Did TTC approve?
TTC approved.
Okay, thank you. So what is this, David?
This will make the speed limit on Lacy Road consist, consistent thirty-five from Fitchroona Road the other end. This was, this was planned with the redevelopment of the road. Currently, it's fifty on that section, I believe. So this will make a consistent road section at thirty-five.
Okay, any question? Comments? No? Okay. All those in favor of ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash oh dash zero one, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one.
Next, I'll move approval ordinance twenty-twenty-four oh two, amending chapter twenty-seven to allow waiver for driveway separation.
Second. Did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Okay, what is this?
This is a, I have a change in process to facilitate where our example is Fishatory Road, but I believe Tim Volker is on, and I would like Tim to, to provide a better explanation than I can on this.
Okay, Tim. Are you ready?
Yeah, the city's, yes, the city's current requirement for driveway separation for non-residential driveways is fifty feet on roads with a speed limit of thirty-five miles per hour or less. This amount of separation ensures there are no conflicts with vehicles entering and exiting adjacent driveways. However, in some situations, driveways closer than fifty feet do not pose a safety issue. So the current waiver process is burdensome to driveway permit applicants, and a more streamlined process would reduce the amount of staff time necessary for the waiver process. This will give the city engineer the ability to allow driveways with different configurations than the current ordinance and would help streamline this process, but still allow for an engineering review to ensure safety for roadway users.
Okay, thank you. Any question, comments? No? Okay. All those in favor of ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash oh dash zero two, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, so, sorry. Okay, next one.
I'll move approval resolution R fifteen twenty-four, accepting the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Pittsburgh and the town of Verona for the cost share of design services for Fitchroona Road.
Second. Did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance Committee approve?
The Finance Committee approved.
Okay, what is this?
As, as you, I believe all know, you know, Fitchroona Road is a, a joint, joint road, you know, part, the north side, city of Pittsburgh, the south side, town of Verona. We have been in negotiations with them to get an agreement, cost-sharing agreement for this road. While I wish it was larger, we have been able to, we have come to agreement for a portion, this is just for the design services. This is not for the construction costs, but we have, we have come to agreement on, on the cost sharing for this.
Any question, comments? No? Okay. All those in favor of resolution R dash fifteen dash twenty-four, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Twenty-eight.
Sorry, the, the motion carries. So next one.
Move approval of R seventeen twenty-four, accepting subdivision improvements for Phase Two in the plot to Highland Reserve in the Certified Survey Map one-six three-three-six.
Second. Did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Okay, thank you. What is this?
So this is another phase, Phase Two, a number of units or a number of lots has been reviewed, reviewed by the city and, and accepting no more. I do not believe there are any punch list items on this, and it is ready for accepting standard, kind of standard, standard subdivision. I think you all know what's, all seen the, what's going on in Highfield Reserve.
Tim, do you want to add anything else?
No, Alder Herbst, that's correct. There aren't no punch items remaining. Everything has been accepted, conditionally approved.
Okay, thank you. Any question, comment? No? All those in favor of resolution R dash seventeen dash twenty-four, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Okay. Next one.
Move approval resolution R twenty-two four, approving schematic design, preliminary budget for police services facility.
Did Board of Public Works approve?
Public Works approved, amended improvement, adding the, adding the tactical training bay to the resolution. Option, I believe, is one-eight.
Okay, did Finance Committee approve?
Finance Committee referred to, referred to council.
Okay, I have a comment. Dave, are you moving this resolution as amended in Public Works?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, so before we, before we, before we go through this resolution, I want to, I want to make some comments. And so, so about this resolution, and I want to explain what I brought forward. So, so before we started the deliberation of this resolution, and we have a lot of people that come, come tonight, I would like to set up some expectation, clarify some point, and also set up some rules on how we are going to behave during this deliberation. Because this is a very sensible topic for many people, and we have people with different views and opinions. We need to set up some rule of engagement on how we will participate. The council and I have received a lot of email of support or against this facility. And I want to say thank you. We receive more than a hundred emails. So I want to say thank you to all of the people that send their comments and opinions to the council and the mayor. And also, I want to explain part of this process. So first, I want to thank everyone that has been participated, participated in this process, the police department staff, especially Lieutenant Ned Hardwicks, Andrew McCarthy, and Deputy Matt Laha, for all the time that you have invested in this project. I know I have seen a lot. And of course, Chief Morales. I also want to thank the architect and engineer teams, the police, the police facility ad hoc committee that was chaired by Alder Wheeler. Thank you. City staff, council members, and all the residents for attending meetings and writing emails with comments about the facility. This is how democracy works. We have a process, and we was able to participate. And also, I want to thank everyone here tonight who came to express their opinion in support or against this resolution. So as you know, tonight, tonight I have a lot of registration forms, more than fifty, sixty for, for public comment. So everyone registered to speak will have one minute and a half for comment. When your time is up, I will tell you, well, you will, can you can see it in the monitor down here, or also, I want to tell you that your time is up. Since this is a public meeting, I also, and I welcome all civic engagement in my, in all my meetings. I expect that, you know, we can have a, you know, we can participate with our difference opinion in a respectful tone to each other. Please keep your comment to the agenda item. Do not interrupt the person who is speaking. Do not try to make comments out of order. I want to explain also the resolution that I move forward. So first, I would like to clarify to the public present tonight in this room and those who are watching this meeting from home about some misinformation, information that has been circulating that I had personally heard in public meetings or through writing via emails. So this mayor and this council support our police department. This council is in full support and agreement with a building for a new facility and improving the space condition for our officers. This council has already approved thirty-five million dollars for the police building and is considering going to an operational referendum this coming fall to hire more police officers, firefighters, and other internal city staff. So that is support. So, and if that is not support, I don't know what the word support means. Nonetheless, this council has a right to ask a lot of question and request additional information to make the best informed decision for a fifty-million project. Also, this common council has a diverse opinion and perspective. Taxpayers of this city should feel very confident that this body is doing the proper due diligence on behalf of all the residents that they represent. So why the forty-six million dollar? I think this is the best compromise option that I feel comfortable, comfortable in moving forward. It is fiscally responsible, and I think it has the best chance of being approved by this council. However, I also include in the referral sheet option that Alders can bring forward and amend my resolution, another option that are not included, like bringing forward the thirty-five million dollar already approved. As I mentioned to several of you in the past, I think the best option will come from a compromise solution. Tonight, not everyone will leave this room happy, but I expect that at least this council approved the building because our officers deserve a better place to work. We need to start planning Phase Two of the city hall renovation to accommodate our future staffing growth. And also, I want to mention that we had to move our IT department to the basement. There are four people working in a, in a room without any natural light. And they also took part, took a room that belongs to the police department. So we need in the next two years to start building, you know, to start thinking the renovation of City Hall Two. So maybe tonight, we know, we are not going to get consensus, but we are going to get some sort of consent. And thank you again to everyone that is here tonight to express your opinion. Okay? So now, I will be calling you, no, we are going to talk about, do we have the engineer team here? We got Paul, Andrew.
Can we clarify what, what the amended version by, by Port of Public Works is?
Yes, option A is the building, the training bay, plus the shooting range. This is what we have on the table. First, I want to call the architects and engineers, so they can... No, we talk to them, and then we probably... We are the, the... Where is the, the engineer team? There's no Jared here? I saw him. Okay, can you, do you want something to say or no?
I'm just here to answer any questions you may have.
Oh, Andrew is here to answer question? Okay. So, okay, so Paul? Does he want to say anything or no? Paul? No?
No, I'll also play Andrew.
Okay.
Just here for questions.
So what we're going to do, we are going to start with, with the public comments. Okay? I need to call. Okay. 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 Okay, so we are going to start with number one oh one, and then one oh two, if you can come to the table, to the microphone. And you need to say, you have one and a half minute. You need to say your name and address. Okay?
Good evening. My name is Jim Palmer. I'm here to speak on behalf of the officers that work for the Pittsburgh Police Department and that are members in the Pittsburgh Professional Police Officers Association. You should have my written remarks. Obviously, I don't have time to regurgitate all of that, so I'm just going to hit on a few key points. The primary function of any law enforcement agency is to respond to calls for help. Unfortunately, the Pittsburgh Police Department is currently down seventeen officers, amounting to nearly half of its patrol staffing. This critical staffing crisis threatens to impair the agency's ability to fulfill its primary function and to strengthen the relationships that it has in the community through community-oriented policing efforts. Making matters worse, Pittsburgh is not unique in this regard. According to the latest data from the Wisconsin Department of Justice, there are fewer officers working in our state than since two thousand and eight. And that's when the state first began tracking data about this. The new police, police facility proposed in this resolution with the inclusion of option A will give the city the competitive advantage it will need to recruit and retain officers. will give the city the competitive advantage it will need to recruit and retain officers in this environment. Ask yourself, if you were an individual looking for a law enforcement job, would you want to work for a city with an outdated and overcrowded facility? Or would you choose to work for one that had a modern police facility with the infrastructure needed to to meet the demands of policing in the twenty first century? The resolution before you with option A is good for public safety and officer safety. And the officers in this community and in this department respectfully encourage you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. So next, James Robert, he wishes to speak in opposition.
Yes.
And then I want to call one oh three to the microphone. Okay.
I'm James Roberts, Pittsburgh resident, twenty five fifty five Richardson Street. I'm speaking in opposition. I find this plan to be basically the Taj Mahal of a police department, appears to be that a pampered spoiled entitled rich kid gets to build this. I think it's fiscally irresponsible to the taxpayers of the city. I think that when you sit there and have inside parking for all the squads, plus it's absolutely shameful, there's so many departments in here, Madison, Dane County, they have squads parked outside year round. I think it's also shameful that you have a shooting range inside, that's you can pull squad cars in and do scenarios with. I mean, there's no other agency, you got that. We're going to end up having to buy Lexus, Mercedes, Audis, or Volvos for squads to be driven in the future when you build this Taj Mahal? It's absolutely shameful. I think you've gone overboard, there's no options as far as cutting things to save taxpayer money. It's shameful.
Okay.
You know, and then you add two point four million for sustainable energy to the bill. You come, you set a budget for thirty five million and you add probably about forty five percent over that. That's insane. Where do you get it? It shouldn't be off the taxpayer's back pocket.
Okay, your time is up. Thank you very much, Robert. Okay. So next is Rita Hendricks, she wishes to speak in support, and then I am calling number one oh four.
I'm Rita Hendricks, I live at five six five five Monadale in Pittsburgh. First, I want to say how impressive city staff and police officers who presented at the meetings were. It just speaks so well for how professional and respectful Pittsburgh staff is. Second, as a resident, I support this building because it's needed. I don't like higher taxes, but we have to, you know, pay for what we need. And we need a well-trained police department, our city staff needs place to work. And there are just so many reasons why we need to have a well-equipped, well-trained officers and a building will help increase that. City staff needs more space, this building will help that. We need to build for the future, we can't just build for what we need right now, we need to think ahead. And this building will help with that. We need to, we can't expect someone to work in substandard conditions and expect them to do a good job. We can't expect to recruit candidates and have them work in substandard places. If this application isn't or if this isn't approved, we could lose a large grant. Cost is going to increase, we know it will if we don't act now. And this building will help Pittsburgh increase training. And it will also help areas around us increase their training. Please listen to the voices of Pittsburgh and vote for what is best for Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. So next is oh, no, sorry. I am calling number one oh five. And then we have Jane Thompson?
Janay, it's pronounced Janay.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, Janay, okay. She wishes to speak in opposition.
Hello, my name is Janay Thompson and I am a community organizer with Freedom, Inc. As an organizer, we believe in being in the community and meeting community folks where they are at to address their needs and concerns. Within the last couple of days, we have canvassed over three thousand people living in Pittsburgh neighborhoods. And of that three thousand, the majority of these residents didn't even know that the Pittsburgh police are pushing for a fifty million dollar facility. When informed on this issue, everyone was outraged at the increase in taxes and rent and the lack of investments in their own homes, apartments, communities, and lives. They claimed the facility would be for the community, but there was no work done to educate and empower the community through meeting their basic needs and investing in them. And the mayor serves as an and the mayor has served as an older person for at least eight years. So disgusted can't even begin to explain how I feel about her alignment with the police and her refusal to advocate for the communities she has served that have been and continue to be terrorized by the police. Police can't prevent crime, they can't cure illnesses, they don't build homes or house people, and they aren't even interested in lowering the amount of arrests they make in our community. Over sixteen hundred people, community members, signed our petition and recognized that the police and this facility are a symbol of violence and oppression. This project is anti-black, racist, and harmful, and it perpetuates a history of over-surveillance and a lack of investing in Pittsburgh's highly impacted communities. And we, community members, don't want the scraps Pittsburgh Police Department has to offer. Officer Morales is incapable of respecting Black Lives Matter protesters in Milwaukee, and now we have to suffer the consequences.
And next is Ms. Janelle Adams?
Jewel.
Jewel, okay, sorry. Okay, Jewel. She wishes to speak in opposition.
Good evening, my name is Jewel Adams and I'm a community power builder lead here at Freedom, Inc. That means that I go out into the community on a daily basis looking to seek what is in need of my people that's out there in the community. We are not in need of a fifty million dollar building, we are in need of housing, treatment, shelter, food, clothing, healthcare, daycare, community services for our people, mental health illnesses. We have a need for fifty million dollars and it is not for to help the police fill anything. Whoever gave them the land need to give them the money to refinish it up, build it up, put it together, or whatever they need. We out here in the community need help. This building is not about serving the community, nor is it about correcting or helping the community. We need fifty million dollars to do anything other than serve and give it to the police. Please do not give Pittsburgh fifty million dollars to reconstruct a mansion for them to live in and work in. We have a Salvation Army shelter that can use that money, that's overcrowded, that turns away women and children on a daily basis. We have mental health illnesses walking the street, we have endless overdoses on a daily basis. We can use every bit of fifty million dollars for our community and our people. Thank you.
Thank you. So and so next one is one oh six and I am calling one oh seven, MT Yang. And then next one is Ma Yang. You can approach the she wishes to speak in opposition.
Hello, my name is MT Yang, I work in this community and I talk to young people all over Madison and none of them have said that they want to invest in the police. This fifty million dollars that is being invested in building this new police facility or cop city should be invested into the community instead. If you care about us, you will listen to our voices and provide us with things that we actually make us will make us safer and not cause us harm. Prior to this meeting, I have asked my young people about if they had fifty million dollars, what they will invest in this money into. And no one has said that they will invest it into a cop facility or get more cops. Instead, they wanted to invest this into their family, buying them groceries, getting them a house to have a roof over their head and better school. We have a campaign called Police Free Schools at Freedom, Inc., led by young people in our program called Freedom Youth Squad. We fought to get the cops out of our MMSD schools for four years and they were finally able to get the cops out in two thousand and twenty. Young people fought and are continuing to fight to show that cops are not the result of safety. There has been research shown that girls in LGBTQIA+ youth are assaulted by the police. Cops are the most harmful people to our community, so how is it that we are investing fifty million dollars into people who further do harm to our community? Do what is right by my people and invest in the community and not the police. No cop city in Pittsburgh and no cop city anywhere. At this time, our community needs this money to be invested into them and not the cops. Thank you.
Thank you. So next is number one oh seven, May Yang, can you say your remember to say your address, please, too, okay?
We only have thirty seconds, we need to get everything in, except that's all.
Okay, are you ready?
Yes, I am ready.
Okay.
Yeah, my name is Ma Yang. I am a community power builder at Freedom, Inc., and I am speaking against putting fifty million dollars towards the police facility. I am beyond disappointed that this project has come this far and yet the majority of the folks that I talked to at the doors does not know that this is happening. Why is, why is it that my community, the most impacted by this issue, are the last people to know? I know why, because you know, because you know that if we have a vote, we will choose not to invest in the police that kill us, that rape us, and that has no regards to human life. Our community need resources, not police. We do not, you do not care about our needs, our community are out there homeless and starving. What are the police doing about that? The police claim to keep the community safe, but yet my community is restless when they see a police car out in the community. I don't understand why you, the common council and the mayor, fail to understand that my people have the if my people have the resources they need, there will be no so-called crime. Fighting to survive a system of oppression is not a crime. The police harass and harassing and assaulting people should be a crime. They should not be awarded fifty million dollars for traumatizing our community. No cop city, Pittsburgh.
Thank you. So next one is one oh nine, one ten, please. Kalif Her? Caleb, okay. She wishes to speak in opposition. Okay, okay. And then number one ten. Please say your name and address, please.
Hello. Hi, my name is Caleb. I'm here in opposition to the resolution. I live on the coast of Pittsburgh in Madison, over where the part of Pittsburgh where there's people of color and it's heavily policed. But I grew up playing soccer in McKey Park every summer. And I take my dogs on a walk every day throughout the whole neighborhood. And I drive, I work around here, basically I shop here, my clinic is on Hatchery Hill. And I'm here because I shouldn't feel afraid when I'm driving home because in my area, there's a lot of policing. And my experience with police have not been good, I am a transgender man. And when I've been stopped by police or they ask to see my ID, I have to explain my gender and my legal name and there's been time where people have said transphobic things in front of me, the police, and laughed about my identity. And it's been like that ever since high school. Somebody sitting up here worked at my high school and they know how kids of color were policed over there. And I just want to say there's a twenty twenty two trans survey that said forty seven percent of trans people said they felt uncomfortable asking police for help. And sixty two percent of them felt uncomfortable asking police for help because of their gender identity. I'm sharing this because I don't want fifty million dollars going towards the policing of trans people and black and brown peoples. And also in comparison to recent twenty US cities.
Your time is out. Thank you. Number one eleven. Oh, yes, no, no, one ten, okay, one ten, sorry.
Okay.
Can you say your name and address, please?
Yes, okay, my name is Selena, I'm a youth justice coordinator at Freedom, Inc. I'm here today in opposition of this proposal. When interacting with our community members, we frequently ask them about their perception of safety, asking them, what does safety mean to you? Their responses revolved around their loved ones such as grandmothers, friends, and families, none of them mentioned the police. At the recent Pittsburgh hearing, the police officers failed to address anything about the community. Instead, they focused on the inconvenience of snow covering the cars and how they needed a parking lot to avoid it. Basically, they're grown and they're lazy to shovel the snow. This lack of consideration for the community is disheartening, especially when there is significant amount of funding available that could be invested in addressing issues like homelessness, feminine feminine hygiene, and resources for youth of color. I want to address that there were more than six meetings about the Pittsburgh city and no effort was made to get out of the community input. And we had to do your jobs and actually go out and talk to them. This idea of creating a cop city in Pittsburgh really highlights the problematic and thoughtlessness approach towards the community. We demand that no money is invested in the police and that every dollar is invested in the community. Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. So number one eleven and one twelve, please.
Hi, my name is Jeanne Moore, I am the queer justice director at Freedom, Inc. Thank you to you all for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I urge you to reconsider the construction of the proposed police facility. As the community grows, it is crucial to prioritize resources that can support development and well-being. The community deserves access to resources that offer positive social and educational opportunities. Community centers can be a hub for recreational activities, cultural events, and social gatherings. Senior facilities provide a safe and supportive environment for older members of the community, while daycare centers offer affordable and dependable childcare services for working parents. State-of-the-art school facilities offer students a quality education. These resources can create a more vibrant, healthy, and thriving environment for all community. Building a facility that teaches people how to use deadly force and shoot guns will not be beneficial to the community. This is not new news. We've seen time and time again how police use their authority and power to sexually and physically assault people and lock up black and brown and LGBTQ plus people disproportionately. To name a few, Kai Peterson, sexually assaulted, arrested, was not treated as a victim of violence. Krista Kaiser, who fought for her freedom from the person who was sex trafficking her, was arrested and locked up. Tony Robinson, needed mental wellness support, was shot seven times. Do you want to be that? I urge you again to vote no for this.
Thank you. I am calling number one thirteen, please. Okay.
My name is Hua, I'm here in opposition of the building of the police training facility here in Pittsburgh. Right now, our communities are facing a profound housing crisis, food insecurity, and violence. It would be morally irresponsible during this unprecedented time to allocate fifty million towards the construction of a police training facility. This decision would not only divert crucial resources away from addressing urgent and pressing basic human needs, but also perpetuate systemic equities and violence within our communities. Investing in a law enforcement infrastructure sends the wrong message about our societal values and priorities because it fails to acknowledge the systemic issues within our current policing systems, which includes racial bias, police brutality, excessive use of force, and lack of accountability. The community and their families are still waiting on answers and an explanation about Erin Rashad and Asia who were killed on Year's Eve in Manona Police Chase. We cannot pour money into police training programs without addressing these underlying problems. Investing in police will only mean more violence for black communities and communities of color in Pittsburgh and surrounding cities. Moreover, the construction of police facility would divert funding and attention away from evidence-based strategies that have been proven to address housing insecurity, food insecurity, and community safety. Instead of investing in punitive and violent measures, we should be directing resources towards affordable housing initiatives, food assistance programs, mental health services, a youth center and shelter, fully funded schools, and community-based approaches to crime prevention. Many Pittsburgh residents are currently struggling to pay for housing or are looking to live elsewhere. With the new construction, taxes will increase and cause more people to be pushed out of their homes and communities. In conclusion, investing fifty million in a police training facility during a crisis in housing, food insecurity, and safety is a misguided and unjust allocation of resources. in housing, food insecurity, and safety is a misguided and unjust allocation of resources. Instead, we need investment in our communities' well-being and safety.
Your time is out. Thank you. So I am calling number one fourteen. And one thirteen, are you? One thirteen? Okay, go ahead. Your name and address, please.
I also work at Freedom, Inc. I'm here in strong opposition of the resolution 2040 to build, to invest fifty million dollars to build a facility for the Fischburg police. I oversee the adult services and programs at Freedom, Inc., specifically services for black and Southeast Asian women, girls, and LGBTQI people who are experiencing domestic violence and sexual assault and state violence. We see directly how impacted black and Southeast Asian victims of domestic violence and sexual assault are by the lack of resources and the hyper-surveillance by police. As elected officials, you have a responsibility to pour resources into making the community safe and a well place to be. It would be irresponsible to invest in police when you have people who do not have their basic needs met. You have black mothers on the streets with their children because they cannot afford rent, even with a job and public benefits. That's not okay. You have a responsibility to invest in the well-being and safety of black and Southeast Asian women and children and LGBTQI people. You need to invest in safe housing for victims and survivors of domestic violence and other forms of violence. Invest in food security for black and Southeast Asian families. Invest in mental health services for black and Southeast Asian families. Invest in quality culturally relevant childcare and youth centers for black and Southeast Asian families. Invest in transportation for black and Southeast Asian families. If you choose to invest fifty million dollars into the police, you're actively participating in harming black and Southeast Asian women, girls, and LGBTQI people. Shame.
I'm number one fourteen, but I think that it's important that I let number one thirteen point five go first.
Okay, so. So what is your number? Is one fourteen?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm giving her a new number because you just skipped her.
Okay, and then one fifteen, is you?
No.
Okay, so you can go ahead.
You go first, I'll go after you.
She said you can go ahead, what is the problem?
Because?
You'll be fine, go ahead.
Can you say your name and address, please?
I'll say what I want. Chi Mo, co-executive director of Freedom, Inc. And I am here, and before y'all listen to my testimony and the rest of the testimonies, I want y'all to reflect back to that proclamation that y'all just did and read at the beginning of our meeting. Reacher shows that twenty-three percent, Reacher shows that in 2023, there was a record high for killings of police across the country. And this has been after the uprising, after all this talk about police need more training, invest more money in police facilities. All over the country, people building new jails and investing more money in police. The state even putting more money, and the federal government putting more money into police. And yet, we still see that the numbers continue to rise. Also, remember that police are routinely called into situations where there was no violence until police arrived and escalated the situation. So they actually, all the training that they've been going through does not de-escalate nothing and instead escalates everything. All this still happens, and millions of dollars are still invested in police. We don't need a regional training facility. And stop trying to generate revenue to fund this police force on the backs of black and brown people. Either vote down the funding for this whole facility or send it back and let the community decide. You all should be angry that the amount that's being proposed was never talked about and that you were overseen, and so let the community decide, let democracy work its way in the way that it's supposed to.
Your time is out. Thank you. Number one fifteen, and then I am calling number one sixteen. One sixteen?
I'm one sixteen. I don't know where one fifteen is.
So who is number one fifteen? So who is one fifteen? You?
She's one fifteen. I'm one sixteen, she's one seventeen.
Okay. Let's go with.
Okay, I'm Dietrich Hassel, resident in Madison for forty years, and I've been talking with residents that live in Fischburg for a long time, and they say that they weren't aware of the police station trying to get a bill for fifty million dollars. They say they weren't aware, period. And so I made them aware of what the situation was, because they say some people have been knocking on their doors and wanted them to sign papers, and they say they had no idea what it was about. And it was a lot of young people. They were like mostly under twenty-five, and it was like ten of them in the house, because I know, but I have five adult grandchildren and eight great-grandchildren. And so some of the older children were my grandchildren that live out here in Fischburg. And so I know several people live out here. And I just feel that the fifty million dollars is just way too much to be spent on just a police station. Everybody has already spoken and talked about what is needed in the community, more daycare, more homelessness. I mean, there's just a lot. That's a lot of money that could help the community, more than just on a police station. And as I look around, and I sat there a long time, and I've been going to various meetings for over thirty years, over thirty-five years since I've been here, and when I look around, all I can feel is stop the status quo. And I really feel that the meeting has been taking place already and that you guys will be getting the funding. And if that's the case, the funding just for a police station and to build up the police station, how about build up the youth, so you won't need the bigger police station for the future? How about that?
Your time is out. Thank you. Number one seventeen. Okay, one seventeen, I am calling next, but you are one sixteen, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, one fifteen, sorry. I am confused. Well, you're one fifteen, okay. Go ahead. Your name and address, please.
Hey, good people. It's clear that they, you know, it sounds like they made their decision. So this is for my people behind me and our folks that are watching, our folks in the overflow room. I want to start off with a quote. The quote says, "A riot is the language of the unheard. And what is it America has failed to hear? It has failed to hear that the promises of freedom and justice have not been met, and it has failed to hear that large segments of white society are more concerned about tranquility and the status quo than about justice and humanity." It's clear to me, by the show that you all just put on with that resolution about Black History Month, in this Black History Month, right, in this February, 2024 Black History Month, talking about a resolution that hopes that black people can prosper and benefit in this country, on the same day that you're trying to give thirty-five, forty-five, fifty million to the police. It's clear to me that you all don't know who this quote is from. This quote is from Martin Luther King in his speech to the Other America, 1968. Don't y'all dare invoke nothing about Black History Month while you're trying to push through a facility that's going to destroy black lives and black communities and black homes and black families. You all should actually be ashamed of yourselves for doing that, that little show that just happened just now. It's disrespectful in the least for people like me and many of us back here. I don't know about the people that stood up with y'all, but for us, who have to deal with them police officers, it's disrespectful.
Your time is out. Your time is out. Your time is out. Please. Your time is out. We need to. Okay, thank you. So number one seventeen, and I am calling one eighteen.
My name is Bianca Gomez Gomez. I live and work in this community. I want to be clear that we didn't share our addresses because we know that your police chief likes to harass and intimidate residents in Milwaukee, and I have no doubt that we'll be paid a visit sometime soon. The first thing I want to address is that representation does not equal liberation. We are sick and tired of you throwing, self-hating people of color in our face and expecting us to be content with violence. I am black. I am Latina, and I do not, right? A person's identity does not mean that they are the voice of the people. A person's identity does not reflect their politic. Your police chief is a racist, Trump supporter that supports, that upholds white supremacy, patriarchy, and the criminalization of black communities. I don't care that he is a Latino man. We cannot trust him with the well-being of our community, and we damn sure cannot trust him, trust him with our money and our children. Thank you, Ms. Jewel. Fifty million dollars is a lot of money. You have an opportunity to change lives in Fischburg. We need housing fit for human beings. We need transportation. We need childcare, and we need rehabilitation. We do not need more state violence. You are choosing to aid and abet a neo-fascist colonial state. It is no mistake that as people are getting more politically conscious, I know my time is up, almost done, as people are getting more politically conscious of, in this economic crisis, that y'all are choosing to give more money to police. We need you to rise up with us. We need you to support us and support the needs of the community and not support a fascist.
Your time is up.
Last thing I will say is what side of history do you want to be on? Because we will judge you. History will judge you and remember you accordingly. You have an opportunity to build up the people. Do not build up the jails. Do not build up this police station. Be brave. Be brave. I'm talking to you. You know, y'all know who I'm talking to. Be brave and challenge the status quo. Allen Baker said, the last thing I will say, I promise you, Allen Baker, the last thing I will say, Allen Baker said, "We who believe in freedom cannot rest till it comes." And I guarantee you, we will not rest until that police station is completely out of your mind.
Thank you. So I am calling number one seventeen and one eighteen. Seventeen? No? Okay.
I'm one eighteen.
Yeah, okay, go ahead. And then I am calling one nineteen.
Okay. Hi, I'm Ari, and the address is three zero five nine Port Arlington Lane, Fischburg, Wisconsin. Okay, so I was planning a different speech, but that was a three-minute speech. I do think that this whole process has been very undemocratic in many ways, one of which is making people with young children wait an hour to, you know, have this discussion is really an unfortunate choice. I do have a couple of things that I want to say, though. I have a certificate from the UW Madison in Criminal Justice, and I know that we promised to pay for a new police facility. We should absolutely, under no circumstances, agree to pay more than thirty-five million dollars for it. The proposed fifty million dollar building is perceived by me and others in the Leopold community as looking like a mansion, which is not helpful towards healing any community relationships with the police department. I also find it problematic that during public presentations about the new building, when I asked what a building would look like if the city spent only thirty-five million dollars on it, the police chief told me that I am defunding the police. This is unhelpful rhetoric meant to shut down a discussion and politicize a civil discourse on budgeting. Finally, U.S. history shows that when you put money into the police, you see a boom in incarcerations, especially of black people. This is a particular problem in Fischburg because WIBRS data confirms that although Fischburg's population has a racial split of sixty-five percent white people and thirteen percent black people, arrests are made of forty-two percent white people and fifty-four percent black Fischburgians. So.
Ari, thank you. Okay, number one nineteen. And I am calling number one twenty.
Hi, my name is Ann Sawyer. I live at three zero five nine Port Arlington Lane, near Leopold School. I happen to agree that the police department has made a decent case that they need a new facility, but I'm very concerned about the cost. I think fifty million dollars is just an outrageous price. Apparently, without public input, the architect has put out a design that prioritizes aesthetics, including in particular a large atrium and huge windows, which I understand all have to be bulletproof. I recommend that the architect go back over and revise the design and make it more practical, less fancy, less expensive, with a modest one-story welcoming area instead of an atrium, smaller windows, and smaller offices. I'm offended that this design is so fancy when our local elementary school, Leopold, is unattractive and not even fully air-conditioned. I think it sends the wrong message when our children get so much less priority than the police. The new design should retain the sustainability features, but it must not be grandiose, looking like some kind of palace. Maybe thirty-five million is a reasonable number, but it's got to be much less than fifty. Thank you very much.
So one twenty, and then I am calling one twenty-one.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Alders. Thank you for having this meeting tonight. My name is David Shaw. I'm a longtime resident, thirty-two years of the city of Fischburg, live at five seven eight eight Ivanhoe Circle. I've interacted with many of you over the last many months on this issue. I've learned a lot about it. I'm here in support of the project. I recognized, or I gave my support through an email today, but I wanted to come and look at you face to face. I wanted to hear the dialogue. I wanted to see what was going on with this issue. I'm still in favor of this issue. I've done a lot of due diligence with you guys. I've been to every public hearing that I could attend. We visited police stations in the city of Chicago with our architects, many of you, Alders, the mayor, other interested citizens, learned an awful lot about it. I'm not going to reiterate all of the things that were said by the couple of people that were in favor, i.e. retention, you know, efficiency, training of our officers, but I am in favor of it. And I also want to say, throughout this process, I have found Mayor, or Chief Morales to be a man of high integrity, high morals, high values, and his officers as well. He's here as a servant and to serve and protect, and I just think he's a really high-quality man and is.
Okay, your time is up. Thank you. So number one twenty-one, and then I am calling number one twenty-two.
Hi, my name is Victor Marsh, and I live in the Wildwood South neighborhood, and I'm actually a resident of Fischburg, thirty-three years. And I'm urging you to approve the new facility with the fifty million dollar price tag. We have delayed acting on a new police. We have delayed acting on a new police station for over 10 years. And the original price has grown because of inflation. And the more we have delayed, the higher the cost has gone. I'm glad to see that now is the time that we are actually going to make something happen. I want to commend the police department in the city for holding the informational meetings all around the city to inform people about what was coming and to do, you know, the mailings that have been done. And, you know, I think it's important that we invest in our police facility and in our police department so we don't have the, uh, terrible things that have been happening in Portland, San Francisco, Oakland, LA, Chicago, and the terrible crime that has just been going crazy because we haven't invested in the police department and the police officers. Again, I urge you to approve this new facility. Thank you.
Thank you. So, so now number 122, and then I am calling 123.
Hi, my name is Jesse Elvin Middleton and have a business in Pittsburgh. Why do we need a $50 million police training facility? Is the crime running rampant in Pittsburgh? Is there enough officers even to staff this facility? How much will it raise taxes? Will people even be able to afford to live in Pittsburgh anymore? Um, instead of building a police facility, since taxings have to go up that high, why not just have them run out of campers? Because like, that's all your constituents are going to be able to afford. The answer is Pittsburgh doesn't need a facility, as Madison already has one that Pittsburgh can use. The residents don't need taxes and more gentrification. Last year, me and multiple community leaders had to come to Pittsburgh Police Department when Pittsburgh failed to protect a trafficked black youth. Maybe instead of a Rambo training facility, Pittsburgh should train on how to deal with missing and murdered indigenous people. We need to force Morales and the other officers to press charges on the ones that exploit the youth.
Thank you. So, okay, um, so we are going to continue with 123, and I am calling 124. Okay, go ahead.
Cool, yeah. So I just want to first start by saying it is.
Can you say your name, please?
Yeah, my name is Tara. I will not be giving my address, considering no one addressed the police at the start for not giving their address. Um, you will not protect us, so if you're going to protect them, I'm going to protect myself. Uh, I am here to speak in opposition to this and I want to make a lot of comments about how utterly disgraceful and disappointing this entire process has been. Y'all keep saying you're doing community transparency, community transparency. Your standard operating procedures still aren't listed on the website, so none of us can tell if you're actually violating the standard operating procedures when you're acting as a police officer in this community. Uh, I also want to point out the fact that you cut the time down from one, from three minutes to one minute and 30 seconds, giving us no notice while also forcing most of us to sit through those hearings where you allowed the police to speak at us for an hour and 30 minutes and then gave us maybe 45 minutes to ask questions and make our comments then. I also want to point out, none of this was done in Spanish. Y'all keep saying that you're reaching out to the community. Where's your translators? I don't see one here. I didn't see a flyer in Spanish. Y'all know, y'all are saying that like you're really excited to have like brown folks leading your community, yet you're not doing the outreach that's required. And speaking of, again, I want to remind everybody, Chief Morales was run out of Milwaukee in 2021 and he is here to run a massive police facility because he's upset that he lost Milwaukee. Do not allow him to do what he did in that community here with even more resources because he knows that no amount of training is going to do anything for the police officers.
Thank you. So now, uh, 124, and I am calling 125.
Okay, 124, my name is Megan and I'm here to oppose, um, the funding of Resolution R 2024. Fundamentally, I oppose the investment of almost $50 million in a police facility. Pittsburgh is a growing city and we need to be investing in services and capital projects that actually support Pittsburgh residents. I went to both public information sessions last week and I found the presentation by Pittsburgh PD and city staff to be lacking in all aspects and offending on numerous accounts. I'm a numbers person, so I'm going to talk a little bit about that. In that session, the current budget was $49.2 million. Today, the council is being asked to approve an additional 11 million to increase it from the previously approved 35, so that makes it 46 million. Where is the other 3.2 million going to come from? Pittsburgh PD said they applied for other grants, but those aren't guarantees. What's to say we won't be back here in a couple of weeks asking for, seeing another budget increase for them? Additionally, the finance team presented that at 49.2 million, the average home would be, um, getting an increase of $279 a year in property taxes. I asked for more info and if we're looking at 55 million or 60 million, which feels likely considering how much this project has gone up, you're talking about $306 a year in property taxes or $336 a year. That's huge. Additionally, while they emphasize that capital money can't be used for operating money, this improved facility, or improved, sorry, you're improved, will require an additional $551,000 for operating expenses, which y'all haven't figured out, which might mean that this property tax increase will also go into that, or you'll have to figure out what other expenses you're cutting. Not only did they also not provide it for renters, which in a growing city, you would think would be extremely important when we're facing a housing crisis in Pittsburgh and Dane County. And lastly, as a fellow Mexican, to Chief Morales, chinga la policia.
Okay, I want to re, okay. Please, please, please. Okay, I want to repeat this. We need to be civil and we know, we don't have to do name-calling, please. We can have a very.
No peace on stolen land.
We can do a very productive meeting with different opinion respectfully, please. Okay? Uh, so, uh, 125, and I am calling 126, please.
Do I, I go now?
Yes, please.
All right, my name is Alexandra. I live in Pittsburgh. Um, I've lived here for over a year. Um, so all the financial reasons that you just heard, um, do not, do not approve this. I am in full opposition. Um, you already approved, um, an amount of money. You should stick to that amount of money. Um, I, um, I take the bus to work. I took the bus to work when it was in negative degrees. Um, the children that have to go to school were at that very cold bus stop. Instead of investing even more money than you have already agreed, why don't we take that money and invest in our public transportation? Why do we have to freeze in the winter on the bus? Why did I have to get a ride here? Because if I wanted to take the bus, I would still have to walk 40 minutes. That is unacceptable. There is a trash can at my bus stop. It is, says Pittsburgh on it, it is green, it is about my height. It has wheels on it, it is full. And you know what? That blows over in the wind and there is trash everywhere. I want safe and healthy communities. I want housing. I live in a housing facility, I live in a, uh, that is run by corporations, a corporation that does not upkeep the building. We are a, a, a growing community, so we need to build out our housing services. We need to build our health services and to address the, uh, like, to address the issue of drugs, we need, you know, something more similar to the CARES program. We don't need more police officers going to overdoses. I have friends that have overdosed. People do not want to call the police when their friend's overdosed because they do not want to get arrested. Arresting a drug dealer will not solve my dead friend's problem. Having a fentanyl test drive might have. All right? So vote no on this. Um, and you should not say address. Maybe town, but why should anyone who's a victim of domestic violence have to say their address?
Your time is up. Thank you. So number, number, uh, number, uh, 126, and I am calling number 127. Okay, you can go. Okay, please silence so we can hear, um, the other people that they wish to speak, please. Okay, go ahead.
My name is Catherine. I'm not going to tell you my address. Why would I do that? I don't trust you. Um, you haven't given us any reason to trust that you're going to listen to anything that we're saying today. One of the things I'm thinking about when I think about what I should say up here is, how could I possibly make them listen when they have already ignored so much information, so many facts gathered by people who know the situation better than I do? What am I supposed to say that isn't just a repeat of what everyone before me has said? And you stated when you walked into this meeting today that you are already on the side of the police, that you are already allied to the police and that whatever we say today essentially, you will make the decision in their best interest and not in your community's. You're not listening to anyone who is here today, as far as I can tell. Your, your community is telling you what they need, what resources they need, where this money could go. They're doing your job for you, writing out plans for how those funds could be spent. One of the pieces of propaganda at those meetings was that those funds couldn't be spent on anything else, but that's untrue. And people have done the research on that. And people have done the research for you to show you where that money could go, to benefit their communities. All I can do at this point is ask you to listen to the wealth of information that your community has given you today and before today.
Thank you. So number 127, I am calling 128, please. Okay, Josh.
Yeah, my name is Josh Jenkins, live in Pittsburgh in the South Dale neighborhood. Uh, lived in Pittsburgh and the town of Madison for about 20, 25 years. Um, and, you know, one thing I want to reflect on is the boosters of this project, including Morales, the police department, um, really take on a lot of fear tactics. You know, all the, the public information sessions, quote-unquote, um, you know, begin with, um, Lieutenant Hardwick holding up a, a bag filled with shell casings. You know, we're told that we don't want to be somehow San Francisco or Chicago. And the reality is, uh, crime rates are dropping in, in Pittsburgh since 2017. Um, you know, there, there is no crime wave in Pittsburgh other than policing. And so I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to just briefly describe my neighborhood to you. You know, we added about 8% of the Pittsburgh population to the city last year when we were added from the town of Madison, one of the highest densities of children in the, in the entire county. Um, and what policing looks like in our neighborhood is paramilitary-style raids, AR-15s, K-9 units attacking a kid that I mentored, you know, 15 years ago and, uh, making him bleed outside of my apartment. You know, uh, um, flashbang grenades, uh, shields, AR-15s. This is terror. It's not only terror, it's trauma. And if you want this city to be better for the youth, you would listen to us today. Don't fund $50 million. Don't fund $35 million. You need to take into consideration the future of the children of this neighborhood, this city, rather than the, the potential for recruiting more police. That's the biggest fear that we've been, we've been sold is whether we're going to have a functioning police department. Nothing about the future of the kids and the families in this community.
Your time is up. Okay, thank you. 128, and I am calling 129. Okay? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Nathan Schilling. Um, I'm, live on 202 North Pinkney in Madison. Uh, I took the bus here today. Uh, had to walk 30 minutes at the end. Clearly, you could invest somewhere, uh, in, in your transportation budget so that I could actually get here. I want to reflect on something that, uh, one of your architects of this plan mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, that the intention of this facility is not only to increase, uh, police resources in Pittsburgh, but also to increase police terror in Madison and the surrounding areas. They openly acknowledge this. What is the point of including a gun range if not to increase the ability of the police to murder their own citizens? The last thing I want to say is pigs is pigs.
Thank you. 128, and I am calling 131. Please silence. Okay. Go ahead. Okay.
My name is Connor. I live in another part of militarized Madison, on the northeast side, where every day in my apartment, I hear the war machine F-35s flying over my home and the schools of civilians and children in the second-largest city in Wisconsin. At least when I hear the F-35s and the F-16s, I'm not bombed like the innocent Palestinians who were bombed by the same planes that are in our backyard. I will not stay silent while another inch of our community is sold to another military and turned into a war zone without the consent of the people. The police are a military force created to control and quell any uprisings, originally first enslaves and freed black people and now in the working class, people to maintain the status quo of the capitalist system. There is no such thing as a good cop. Uh, I want to mention something about, uh, inflation is the reason for this increased cost. Um, inflation, inflation is the reason that people are living on the streets and unable to pay bills or buy groceries. How dare you put the burden of inflation on the working people? And finally, as that last presenter just mentioned, you have been more than happy to talk about how every other jurisdiction in Wisconsin will be able to use this facility, from Madison to Milwaukee, all the way up north. It's abhorrent in a nation where we claim democracy, it's the biggest joke, that a decision that will affect the entire state is being discussed by 13 people on one night on a Tuesday? Like, it's ridiculous that this is not a referendum. You cannot vote to approve this budget. You are voting against the will of the people. You are voting to transform spaces and resources that could be used for public goods to militarize.
Your time is up. Thank you. So I am calling 131, and then 132.
All right, Aaron Richardson, live here in Pittsburgh and here to, uh, support the facility. I think it's something that, as, uh, Mayor said earlier, and I agree with your comments on the need here in the community. It's a need that isn't going to go away, unfortunately. Now, the thing, people have said a lot of things that are also needs here in the community as well, of course, but the reality is this isn't going to go away. And unfortunately, the longer we push this back, the more expensive it's going to be. We saw this with the jail here in Dane County as well. Uh, unfortunately, but I do think that this is, uh, something that now that we're supporting the police department, it's supporting the community, like the mayor said, here in City Hall. We're pretty limited on space, actually, already packed. We're a growing city, we continue to grow. And so I do encourage you to support this. Um, you know, while there's a few things taking off here and there, it is something that is overdue and it is something that no one supports the police department, or the entire city as well. And it is something I think is necessary. It's a need that's not going away. And so that's why I think it's important to continue moving this forward and appreciate your time.
Thank you. So, uh, 132, and I am calling 133.
Hello, thank you. My name is Jason Strauss. I live at 5212 Blazing Star Lane. I've been a Pittsburgh resident for about 14 years now. I appreciate the opportunity to address the council. Um, it's a question of space. Th- this has been put off far too long and it's not going to get any better. Pittsburgh is growing like a weed. We have to plan for the future and if we don't, the problem is just going to continue to get worse. Um, if you want good teachers, you have to have good facilities, good training, good equipment, and the best pay and, uh, around. It's no different, if you want to have a good police force, you got to have the best facilities, the best training, the best equipment, and the best pay and salary. So I would really encourage you to look to the future and to support the $51 million renovation. Thank you.
So 133, and I am calling 134.
All right, Suzie, and I am a Pittsburgh resident. Um, I'd like to take a moment to express my support for the new facility, including the tactical bay. I understand the financial implications of an additional 15 million to the existing 35 million in the CIP budget. I recognize that delaying the project might lead to increased, increased costs and bring us closer to spending almost a $6 million slated for construction contingencies. For a decade, I actually had a neighbor who had severe mental health issues. Um, and he ebbed and flowed and the harassment and things that happened, um, was very, varied for day-to-day for 10 years. I watched over 10 years our police department treat him with dignity and respect, no matter how unsafe he felt, no matter how unsafe we felt in the neighborhood. The establishment of a training facility, particularly, particularly one equipped with resources like a tactical bay, will significantly aid the officers in handling high-stress situations, de-escalating conflicts within the community without, without resorting to use firearms. Through specialized training, exercise, and simulations, officers can refine their communication skills, crisis management techniques, and, uh, the proactive approach enhances officer safety, but also an opportunity to foster trust and confidence within the community by demonstrating their commitment to resolving conflict peacefully and minimizing the use of force whenever possible. Our, uh, Pittsburgh Police Department has shown their commitment to our community through consistently engaging with the community through outreach efforts such as National Day Out, Halloween Patrol, and growing partnership with our police department. Despite staffing constraints, they still make an effort to walk the neighborhoods, meet the citizens, and attend, uh, community events hosted by other organizations. Lastly, I'd like to acknowledge the exemplary service of.
Thank you. Uh, 134, and I am calling 135.
Buenas tardes. Good evening. My name's Armando. I live at 5481 Lacy Road. A couple. I live at 5481 Lacy Road, a couple minutes walk from here. This evening, I was having supper with my wife and my family. I have four children, nine, eight, seven, and two months old. And during supper, my wife and I decided that I would come here and to voice our opposition to this resolution. We think that this is a massive failure in investment at this point in our cities, in our city and for our city's future. We should be investing in schools, folks. Schools hold us together. We have no schools dedicated to our children in the city of Fitchburg. A growing city, a vibrant city, a diverse city, a city that offers many of us hope, a city that offers us many opportunity, and a city that could be inclusive and at the same time have a moral budget, and for us to invest in our school, in our cities. Create a school. I wish I could send my children to a school here in Fitchburg. Now that creates community, that creates safety, that creates those long-lasting, deep-rooted families that we all strive for. I heard somebody refer to Fitchburg as a weed. Fitchburg is not a weed. And I too have done my due diligence on this, and I oppose this resolution.
Thank you. Number 135, and I am calling 136.
Good evening, council and community. My name is Benji, and I work at 501 East Badger South Side Elementary, and I am here to speak on behalf of the babies. And I, and because of the babies, I am forced to oppose this resolution. I am forced to oppose any spending on the police force. Every morning, I serve the babies. I am in a school where I am working with children from four years old to 10. And every morning, I see both Fitchburg police and Madison police terrorize and humiliate my families, my community, when it is already difficult enough to get your baby to school, to prevent the weight of the state falling down and kidnapping your baby for truancy? This police are stopping our families. They are ticketing them. They are burdening them with more financial costs than they can afford. Where is the support? If you fully expect our babies to get educated, to get fed, to be supported, to become the adults that they could become, why terrorize them at the very foot of the door, right where I can see them from the main office? And I am powerless to help them. If you will not consider housing our families, then consider this, consider investing in transportation that will get our families to where they need to be, that will get our families to the jobs that they need, so they can find housing and be thriving members of our society. Oppose Cop City.
One, number 136, and I am calling 137.
Hi there. My name is Rachel, and I live in the Dunsmarsh neighborhood. Recently moved there from the Swan Creek neighborhood. Why a shooting range unless they're planning on shooting us? Why a shooting range unless they're planning on shooting us? I have a friend, one of the only people of color that I knew in the Swan Creek neighborhood who actually was stopped by the police because he fit a description. He was stopped for 20 minutes by an unmarked police car, a Fitchburg police car, and a Madison police car. He said it was the scariest night of his life. He was just on his nightly jog. And the stark contrast that I have seen from the policing in the neighborhood that I used to live in, which was nearly zero, to the neighborhood that I live in now, which can I mention, is also a food desert. Could we please get a grocery store? Could we please get sidewalks for the kids to be able to walk to their bus stop in the morning? Could we please get air conditioning in my child's school before we give $15 million more dollars to the police? And I also wanted to just commend all of the people that I saw out in the community doing the work this week. I know that that pickup line at Leopold is rough, and you guys were troopers. So thank you all for being out there, and thank you all for, for listening. And oppose Cop City. Thanks.
Thank you. 137, and 140.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Riching, and I'm a resident of Fitchburg, and I oppose this resolution. Fitchburg does not need this excessive facility to support policing tactics which undeniably cause destruction and lasting harm in our most vulnerable communities. Rather than building a costly policing facility that will not effectively serve the interests and well-being of Fitchburg residents, I urge the council to consider use of the allotted capital funding for building facilities that could support childcare, youth and community centers, healthcare, sheltering and feeding the unhoused, and affordable housing with paths toward ownership. In addition, many other cities that have adopted alternative response teams to address needs in the community related to mental health and addiction have seen significantly improved outcomes with lower negative consequences for residents and significantly reduced costs. I strongly urge the council to oppose increasing funding for this facility and to instead prioritize equity in Fitchburg. Thank you.
140, and then I am calling 142.
Hello, my name is James. I wish I could tell you where I was from, but the names of this land have been stripped. We no longer have them. All I simply wish to do is create space for the rage that the people in this room hold.
Your time is up. I am calling- I am calling number 142. And I am calling 143. I want to call a recess for five minutes. Do I have a motion?
Move to recess for five minutes.
Oh, second.
All those in favor of recess, say aye.
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 We are recessing for five minutes.
Okay, I move to reconvene.
Second.
All those in favor of reconvening the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Okay, so, so next one is 142, and I am calling 143. Okay?
My name is Wally. I'm a marriage and family therapist who works in the city of Fitchburg. I've worked with dozens of families who have hundreds of problems, and I can count on one hand the number of times that the police were a part of the solution to any of those problems. Do you know who is almost always a part of the solution? Teachers, you know, having housing that works, transportation, these aren't mysteries. You know, this would not be rocket science to figure out where to properly invest this money. This holds true even for the families I've worked with from Safe Harbor. If you're familiar, it's one of six child advocacy centers in the state of Wisconsin, and the only one with a mental health relationship in the community. And almost across the board, these families do not feel assisted by the police. I don't remember actually hearing any time where they felt like the police actually helped them in any way. You could be against this for a lot of different reasons. You could even be against it for fiscal, fiscally conservative reasons. $50 million? How many police dollars need to be spent before something good actually happens? It's pretty astronomical. Imagine just a tenth of that being invested into schools. Somebody in support of this earlier made a reference to, we get good teachers if we have good schools. We have crap schools. What are you talking about? That's not the comparison that you think it is in this situation. And I can tell from the smug, disinterested looks on all of your faces that you've already made your decision. So-
Your time is up. Thank you. So, 143, and I am calling 144.
Hello. First things first is, oh, it's been a wonderful display from the public comments tonight. I'm going to just allow myself to breathe. I'm going to allow myself to speak from my heart. I've been told that your minds are made up. I've been told that no matter what we say, that you're going to vote yes, despite having a lot of evidence that there needs to be more conversation and more time. And I don't believe that the pressure that the police are putting on this building is Are, I mean, this is a serious question, like, do any of you need help? Are you being forced to just pass this? Do you not have the ability to stand up and stand against something that may seem to you unpopular, but it's actually, if you're listening, you know, we're here and we're ready to support those who want to actually use your position that you're in in order to make decisions that are in the best interest of everybody who's spoken tonight and all the people who can't speak. Thank you.
Thank you. 144, and I am calling 145.
I'm going to take a minute, too. Thank you. Appreciate you doing that. Collect myself also. I'm not going to sit here and cry tonight. I've already cried all the tears that I have. For people who don't know, I think everybody in this room probably knows that the Manona Police Department on January 1st decided to murder three young people by running them off the road into a tree. Just so happened, I was the mentor for one of those young men for 10 years of their lives, and very close with them. They meant the world to me. And Manona Police Department decided to take their lives. I think it's important for us to think about what's just happened in Dane County, where we've now agreed to spend $209 million, $209 million to lock up 800 people, approximately 60% of whom are African-American. If you divide that $209 million, quarter of a billion dollars almost, $209 million by those 800 people, we could give each and every one of those people in that jail And I can promise you that if any of the individuals in that jail had $261,250, they wouldn't have any problems, and they wouldn't be in jail. And the reason that went through is we were told that it was going to get more expensive every year, so this was actually going to save the population money.
Your time is up. Excuse me, your time is up. We have other people that they want to speak up.
Listen, your time's up! You need to go! No! You're go, please.
I want to recess, I want to recess five minutes.
I move to recess for five minutes.
Second.
All those in favor of recessing, say aye.
Aye.
We are recessing for five minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of reconvening the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. So now I will call 145, and then 146.
Thank you. I just want to talk about cultivating safety. You cultivate safety through respect, through well-being, through helping people in need. We need to cultivate safety more. People behind me and a lot of people in the community, they're hurting. They don't feel safe. And we all want things to be safer. I think that's one thing that is very understood. It's a matter of how. And the police are not going to help people living paycheck to paycheck. I don't feel safe because of my poverty line, not, not a level of crime, but a level of precarity. And a lot of people feel the same way. The police will not help us with living paycheck to paycheck. The police will not help us with our medical bills. They will not help us with our working conditions. They will not help us pay rent. I think it's kind of insulting that the main concerns for building this is the substandard working conditions, which you mentioned, and then also the space. Who isn't struggling with that? Who isn't? So the $50 million is a $50 million failure of creativity, of imagination, of respect and compassion for our community. Show respect, and we will all cultivate that respect and give safety to each other. We have to cultivate that respect, and it's just insulting to have a $15 million failure of that respect happen and just bury it away into just protecting property rather than protecting people. Because that's what essentially is what police end up doing. It's, it's a matter of property, not a matter of people, so-
Your time is up. Thank you. 146, I am calling 147.
Hello, and thank you. My name is Jeff. I live on Lyman Lane, just on the way there. And just a little more background on me is that I was actually raised by two now-retired police officers. And I have to say, I am in complete opposition to the plan as it currently stands. Every day, I see children walking down the street without a sidewalk to walk on. And it was explained at the information session that I went to that there are restrictions on how the funds can be spent. I would say, from what I heard, is that sidewalks would be a perfect use of those capital improvement funds. And furthermore, we've heard a lot about how we need to supposedly hire more police. And I have to ask, why do we need to hire those police? Crime is down in the area. Crime has been going down in the area. You can look across the country, and it shows that police do not prevent crime. If you look at New York City, one of the most effective things that they did to fight crime was install streetlights, a capital improvement project that made everyone safer, and it was not spending on money on the police that made people safer. And it was not spending on money on the police that made people safer. Since 2020, we have seen a lot of well-intentioned, well-meaning people recognize that the police need reform. And they've spent a lot of money across this country on body cams and trainings. And since then, what we've seen are complaints of police misconduct go up, as well as killings by police go up. The police do not keep us safe, they do not prevent crime, and it is not the job of this common council to write them a blank check for whatever they claim that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. One forty-seven and I am calling one forty-eight.
Hey there. I'm Kathleen Thompson, 201 West Beltline Highway in South Dale. I've lived there since 2021. I attended a single information session that I got one mailer on before the meeting and I was aghast at what was proposed. I am, the Lieutenant Hartwick is very interested in selling this body a false bill of goods. The promise that he is making is that there is, that if we pay for this facility, then we will have the training that everyone is agree, that everyone in this crowd, I think, believes is required to have safe policing in Pittsburgh. That is not true. What, what he is admitting is that the police are undertrained and the only, he is incapable of, of solving that problem for less than fifty million dollars. This is unbelievable and it is, it is egregious that this body is taking this proposal seriously. This is, um, the, the Twenty-Fourth Century Policing Report was released under the Obama administration. There is extensive recommendations related to training, data transparency, and accountability within that report. That report was touted extensively within the information sessions. And yet Lieutenant Hartwick is unable to point to any evidence of actual, of legitimate community engagement practices that his department is, is enacting. And so while, while there's a lot of talk, I would say, related to engaging with, having the police engage in community-led trainings or, uh, uh, community listening sessions, there are no, there are no existing relationships.
Your time is up. Thank you. One forty-eight and then I am calling one forty-nine.
You ready for one forty-eight?
Yes, you, yeah.
My name is Carol Poole. I have been a Belmar resident since 1982. If you don't know what Belmar is, it's probably one of the most diverse homeowner-owned neighborhoods in the city of Pittsburgh. I also serve four terms as an alderperson for my district, which is District One. I have worked on capital and operating budgets and understand the difficult choices you guys have to make and how hard it is to decide how to allocate all of those funds. The fiscal duty to the citizens of Pittsburgh is to provide for essential services. I know that there are many here that would disagree with me, but I believe that includes police, fire, ambulance, plowing the snow, picking up the trash, and doing all the day-to-day stuff that we need to do. I had a seventeen percent tax increase on my homeowners, my home taxes this year that went to the county. My school taxes have almost doubled in the last three years, so we are making investments in schools. And for a matter of fact, stating something that other people have talked about, Pittsburgh did build a school this year. I realize there's little room in these budgets to make choices, but I think this is a long overdue investment in our city campus. Our city campus needs to be modernized and I think that being able to use the land across the street at no cost is a huge benefit. This is gonna provide much-needed space, not only for, for the police, but also due to growth from the town of Pittsburgh and, or taking on the town of Madison and also the way the city is spreading in its planned growth. We need modern facilities to support modern ideas. The Pittsburgh Police Department has been a leader in community policing.
Your time is up.
Since the nineteen eighties. I'm gonna talk a little longer, too. But they've been unparalleled in community outreach. I worked very closely with the police department as an alderperson. They were doing foot patrols, bike patrols, they were in the community, they were meeting the people. I was physically out, walking with two officers in my neighborhood and.
Thank you. One forty-nine and I am calling one fifty-one.
Hello, my name is Sam Douglas. I grew up at 3058 Boss Hard Drive in Seminole Hills, which is a affluent and majority-white neighborhood in Pittsburgh. I can count on one hand the number of times I saw police patrolling the neighborhood in my eighteen years living there. And that's not because there isn't crime among the residents of this rich neighborhood. There's plenty of drug use, plenty of domestic violence, drunk driving. Why aren't the Pittsburgh police policing the rich neighborhoods? It's pretty simple. If you want to find the Pittsburgh police, you'll find them stalking and preying upon the communities of color in this city. Police do not prevent crime. This proposed facility will suck the funds out of the public institutions that actually increase public safety, like healthcare, like housing, like youth shelters, like apparently air conditioning in elementary schools. Every dollar in this fifty million dollar proposal that doesn't go to help our neighbors stand on our own two feet is a dollar that goes into the batons to knock us down. As a Pittsburgh native, I strongly oppose the police facility and advocate for the reallocation of the tax dollars to community services. Thank you.
Thank you. One fifty-one and then I am calling one fifty-two.
Hi.
Yes, hi.
My name's Anastasia. I live in Pittsburgh, in the Quarry Hill area. You know, I sat through the, the police sessions on Tuesday and Thursday. It was a lot, like, sitting through, not getting any questions through at all, like, maybe thirty minutes for questions. It's just, it's unconscionable to move forward with a plan in which the numbers keep growing every time. We've given you a budget, you have to work within that. Too bad. I'm so sorry. We all have that pressure with on, on us. I don't have a break room. I don't, you know, I don't have all of these amenities that I need to do my job. Too bad. This is just the, the, where we're living right now. We don't have those things and we have to do without. You gotta be creative. I think that was a great point by somebody. You gotta be more creative than this. You haven't done any community outreach for this. That is not community outreach. A pitch is not community outreach. There has been no accountability to these changes. There have been, there will be no accountability. There won't be. Like, we have to all just accept that. And when you vote, if you vote yes, you're making a choice. You're making a choice to over-police. You're making a choice to not prioritize these other things. You really are making a choice and you need to make a better choice. Don't fucking vote yes. I can't believe it. I can't believe it. Our safety does not come from police. It comes from.
Thank you. One fifty-two and then one fifty-three.
Hi, my name is Kelsey. I live on the west side of Madison. I just wanted to take a pause and ask you guys if you're all paying attention. Are you hearing what your community is telling you, what they're asking you for, what they need? They're giving it to you right here. We do not need more cops. We do not want more cops. We do not want to give them a fifty million dollar facility. They don't need it. They don't need to get better at shooting us. They don't need to get better at beating us with batons. They don't need to get better at that. The community needs housing, transportation, healthcare, mental healthcare, childcare. They've been lining out for you all night. Are you paying attention? Are you? Did you hear? Are you hearing it? Did you hear what they said in the hall? They're scared. We're all scared, we're all, fuck, we just, like, it's right here. We're giving it to you. We do not support this. Your community has shown up tonight to tell you that. We do not support it. We do not want this. We want community support, not police support. Please, listen to your community, to your constituents, to the people here who showed up to tell you to come up here and talk on the mic and do this scary thing to tell you what they need. Housing, childcare, sidewalks for the kids. It's easy. You don't have to support the police. We can make things better, not worse. Thanks.
Thank you. One fifty-three and I am calling one fifty-four.
Hi, my name's Noel Moore Schalzer. All I need to say is I, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth, everything, everyone in opposition to this resolution has said tonight. And the rest of my time, I would like to just invite us all to feel the shame of how this evening has gone, how this evening has started, where it seems to be ending up based on all of your faces tonight, just to feel it. Let's just take a minute to feel it. Thank you.
Once again, we give you sidewalks, transportation, better schools, air conditioning in the schools, literally anything but this.
My landlord sent me a notice, he's raising my rent because of tax increases. I forwarded the message to this body.
Your time is up. Thank you. Uh, one fifty-four and I am calling one fifty-five.
Muy buenas noches. Mi nombre es Mario Garcia Sierra. También vivo en Pittsburgh y estoy aquí para expresar mi opinión en contra de esta propuesta. Good evening, everybody. My name is Mario Garcia Sierra. I live in 2620, a smoking trail. I agree with you in Spanish first because I'm a, one of the few Spanish speakers in this area, but we represent seventy percent of this city and it only shows the lack of engagement that other people whose English is not primary language. So I'm here again in opposition to the, uh, this facility, the fifty million. I urge you to find creative solutions to find, um, for the issues that you said you have. And I think that, um, I was looking at my property taxes as I was preparing and they are really expensive and, and this effort is fiscally irresponsible, fiscally irresponsible, an economic burden to everybody, especially low-income families. I want to prevent crime, so let's invest in people. We need childcare. After-school activities for teens. I have a fourteen-year-old daughter and I have to drive her away from my community for services. We need funding for school, for housing, especially affordable housing. I'm part of the CIO board. We did a walkthrough of this community. We have really bad housing, bad quality housing that needs to be supported and support our families. Thank you.
One fifty-five and I am calling one fifty-six.
Hello. I think I start by saying my name is Preston. I've lived in Pittsburgh for over five years now. I was working at a local bakery. The first person who started speaking was actually one of the regulars. I know he loves biscuits and gravy. I am speaking in opposition of this bill because I believe that police officers' jobs should be hard. I think that's how you make sure that you're getting people who care about the community in that position. I think when you spoil them with parking garages and shooting ranges, what you get is people who like violence. And that's not going to make a community safer. My mom is a therapist. I know for a fact that people on Madison Police Department drink and drive. I've worked with people who are now correctional officers who should have been charged with drinking and driving, but luckily due to COVID, they had their case overturned. So I know that the justice system is not just. I know that the people in positions of power could just as easily be prisoners if the world were just a little different, if time hadn't worked out for them, and if they didn't have a certain color of skin especially. So I just need to hear, like, I'm, I'm looking out and I don't feel represented. I don't see very many young people on, on group, let alone anybody who, uh, seems to be connecting with the audience here. I, I, I see faces of grief, so I understand that you're empathetic people and I would hope that that empathy can lead you to make the right choice tonight.
Okay, thank you. One fifty-six and one fifty-seven.
Hi, my name's April Peterson. I'm a resident of Pittsburgh. I'm here to voice my opposition to this prohibitively ridiculously expensive proposed training facility. My main concerns are that more police in our city will increase the violence at their hands of vulnerable community members and also that this project diverts much-needed money away from potential evidence-based public safety measures like housing, childcare, and education. At a time when we're facing multiple crises, sending this much money to police, fifty million dollars, and burdening families at the rate of two hundred dollars in tax increases each year, that sends a clear message of disregard to the well-being of the citizens of Pittsburgh. How can a plan from 2014 still be considered relevant with these increases and what's happened the past couple of years? Some of the police chief's arguments for this facility include recruitment, but maybe if they're having a hard time recruiting or having enough space in a shooting range, they should just shrink, shrink their staff. If recruiting police is so hard, maybe it's time to acknowledge that the large moral injury of being a violent weapon of the state incurs on a person. Decent people don't want to become cops. We don't need more cops in Pittsburgh.
Thank you. I am, uh, one fifty-seven and I am calling one fifty-eight.
Tom Clutters, my name. I'm a retired police officer from the city of Pittsburgh. I want to thank all of you for your time, not only your time, but your effort in this project. I know it hasn't been easy, no question. We've put it off more than once. I also want to stick up for the officers tonight in telling you that the barbs they were, everybody threw at them is so unfair. We have a lot of good officers on this department and there's a lot of good officers in Dane County. That's, that's, it's not a cop city. That's not what we are here. We're a safe city. And you know, I'll tell you why we're a safe city. Because people are moving to the city of Pittsburgh in big numbers. And that means a lot to people out there in the community. We also have some of the biggest businesses in Dane County and they want to come here because it's safe. Also, when I was mayor, we had a lot of people telling us from Dane County, from the city of Madison and, um, Dunn, Dunn, the town of Dunn over here, what we should do and what we shouldn't do. We need six votes tonight and I sure hope you don't put this off so we lose officers. We don't want to lose any because of your vote tonight. We don't want to lose any because of your vote tonight.
Your time is up. Thank you. 1:58, then I am calling for Brian Shimmin. Is he here? No? Okay.
Good evening. If you don't invest in the future, you're doomed to regress in the past. My name is Greg Jones, and I'm a resident of Pittsburgh. I serve as the president of the local NAACP, co-chair of the Law Enforcement Leaders of Color Collaboration of Dane County, and raise my children here in Pittsburgh. I'm going to just recite one of the resolutions excerpts from the NAACP's National Convention a couple of years ago, then make a couple of statements and be out of your way. The excerpt is this: "Whereas many law enforcement agencies have minimal training relating to diversity, culture, and bias, and municipalities have no bias training mandates at all, Pittsburgh is front and center in leading this charge. It is, in my opinion, that the training center connected to this project, which we fully support, will address issues like crisis intervention, mental health services, resiliency and suicide prevention, use of force options, and de-escalation tactics. If those elements of the training program are incorporated, instituted, and implemented, Pittsburgh stands in a great position to be a leader in changing the relationship between community and law enforcement." And lastly, let me finish. The NAACP and myself personally support this project because it is an investment. Training is an investment. Make this no doubt. It's overdue, should have been done years ago. I conclude my remarks.
Thank you. So we are done with all the registration for people out there in this room.
Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment to display the videos. I know there have been people that have recorded videos over the course of the past month, and I feel like that those videos should be displayed because those folks have been told that they, their voice can be heard through video. So I don't want to disregard or dishonor that. I'd like to move to show any videos that have been submitted to Fact TV.
Second. I have two people, you know, we can do that, but I have two people online first. Okay? I don't know. Scott, do you need time to? Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna call Heidi Reynolds. Heidi, you have one minute and a half.
Oh, thank you all. My name is Heidi Reynolds, and I live on Anton Drive in Pittsburgh. And I recently learned that my neighborhood is the third-highest crime rate in Dane County, but that didn't surprise me. Most of us in this neighborhood, we just go to work, we raise our kids, we obey the laws, and we watch out for each other. But there are people who sell drugs in our parking lots, do to other people in the streets, steal from others, and just generally behave badly. When the police come to my neighborhood, it makes me feel safer. And in the almost six years I've lived in this neighborhood, I have seen nothing but polite, respectful, and helpful police officers. They walk our parking lot, they drive through, and they park and watch. As an older person, I am eternally grateful for that. My concern with this whole anti-com sentiment is that they're not really offering an alternative. So the theory being, if the money is spent in the community, what does that even mean? That if we give citizens more money or services, that we suddenly start policing ourselves and crime stops? I find that very hard to believe. The people that are committing the crimes aren't just gonna suddenly decide they have enough money or services and then start treating people with respect. Moreover, the training facility is a good step toward helping our officers learn de-escalation and prevention of crime. I'm sure the officers don't want to arrest people, and I'm sure they don't want anybody to get hurt, but their commitment to our entire, to our entire community, especially those of us who obey the law.
Thank you. Next is Susan Easterday.
Since we want outcomes that resolve problems without creating new ones, and because my background is in nursing, I'm familiar with the need for continuous training. Through practice in realistic and stressful situations, the chance of a poor outcome is reduced. Syringes, IVs, medications, and equipment malfunctions, there's a long list of ways to do harm. Nobody believes that more nurse training increases the probability that the nurse will injure or kill the patient. The same and more is true for police training. Decision-making under pressure is where the potential for mistakes occurs. Appropriate use of firearms is a diminishing skill set. That means use it or lose it. When there isn't continuous practice in lifelike settings, there should be no expectation for improved outcomes. I believe the training scenario puts Pittsburgh police in the best position to deliver results that will enhance proper decision-making under pressure to appropriately de-escalate situations, reduce potential for injury to staff and the public, and results in potential cost savings by the ways of avoiding litigation. Finally, thank you to Chief Morales and the Police Facility Planning Committee. I appreciate the five-plus public meetings, the individual letter which was mailed to every Pittsburgh address providing info and inviting public attendance at the meetings, and additionally, the city webpages devoted to this topic are very comprehensive. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we are, we conclude with all the registration forms, but in order to play the video, we will need to take 10 minutes recess so you guys can upload all the videos. Okay? Okay, so I need a motion.
Move to recess for 10 minutes.
Second.
All those in favor of recessing, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are in recess.
I made the motion. I'll move to reconvene in open session.
All those in favor of reconvening the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, I will ready, Scott. Yes, okay, so you're gonna play the first one? Okay.
Hi there. Do we want to be a community that invests in structures of care or in perpetuating cycles of alienation and violence? The proposed budget for the Pittsburgh Training Facility strains our city's budgetary capacities dangerously and continues to abandon communities in chronic poverty and deep resource insecurity. The original scope of the project was $25 million, but it has bloated to $49 million with maintenance costs over $600,000 a year. For context, the Madison gross domestic product was just over $60 million in 2022. And yet, we are choosing to spend our limited resources building long-firing ranges so police can learn how to shoot offensively, no self-defense is ever at this kind of range, and take the lives of our community members for daring to exist suspiciously, being homeless, beautifully transgressively queer, stimming in public, protesting, sounding uncooperative, carrying anything in their pockets while black. As long as any form of power over human bias exists, so will racism, patriarchy, and anti-queerness. The logic of policing, a masculinized agent of power having the legalized right to control others, is the same logic that leads to abortion bans, anti-trans legislation, queer bashing, conversion therapy, ABA, and compulsory gendering itself. It is beautiful to let ourselves, all people, be beautifully, unapologetically queered and human, and this is impossible if any form of control, from gender assigned at birth, to the militarization of police.
I don't know if there's a time limit. I will try to keep this brief. I am from Pittsburgh. My parents live on Edenberry Street. I grew up in the area. I do live in Milwaukee now. I've been here since 2016, and I wanted to talk a little bit about my experience with the Milwaukee Police Department, specifically to save on time, one experience on June 2 of 2020, a day that I was kettled by the Milwaukee Police Department. We were lawfully assembled, and the Milwaukee Police Department trapped us by Sixth Street and set road spikes so that we could not leave. There was a car caravan and marching protesters, and basically, a full team of hundreds of police in riot gear, head to toe, attacked a lawfully-assembled crowd of community members in shorts and T-shirts. As I said, they kettled us, they trapped us, we had no way to leave, and then they said unlawfully, this was an illegal move on their part, they said, you have to disperse, like this is a dispersment order, you have to go home. Where could we go? They had us surrounded on all sides by a wall of police, by road spikes. It was not feasible, and they didn't even give us a minute before they started attacking us with tear gas.
Hi, my name is Colleen Chase. I'm a Pittsburgh resident. I recognize the tax impact, and I support the proposed police services facility. Nearly $1 million was paid to FGM Architects to identify needs and design a police facility for our growing population and the future. What you're voting on is a result of this professional service. Yes, it is expensive, but don't consider this building as you would any typical office building. The January weather and holiday-related closures of City of Pittsburgh buildings spotlighted the difference. Ironically, the common council meeting was canceled due to bad weather on the night designated to consider the schematic design for the highly-specialized police services facility. Keep in mind, the new facility will always remain open and be used 365 days per year, all day and all night, in all-weather conditions, holidays, even in the most difficult times. Of course, the police and fire departments continued providing around-the-clock service to our community despite those treacherous conditions. Two officers were even injured during their shift. I urge you not to take our police department for granted. Provide them the resources needed to continue to protect your family, neighbors, and constituents. As a council, you're already well aware of staffing challenges. Attempts to stem the tide of losing officers using referral and retention bonuses have helped, but aren't enough. The reality is we pay less than neighboring departments have mandated over time, some months in excess of 1,000 hours, and our facilities are subpar. This situation is untenable. The recent Department of Justice funding of five new police officer positions recognized our department as a worthy partner to entrust greater resources, and notably that Pittsburgh is a growing city facing challenges with increased...
Hi, my name is Rachel Neeson, and I currently live in Madison. I'm here to ask that you vote no to the police training facility being proposed in Pittsburgh. As a social worker and therapist, I navigate safety issues with clients on a regular basis. I know that there are some issues that are bigger than what I can navigate on my own, and for this, I'm immensely grateful for programs like the CARES Team, who I've called and requested to do check-ins and offer resources to clients before in a way that I have come to trust is non-threatening and non-carceral. Funding and resourcing our communities in this way and continuing to explore and develop creative and humanizing responses to safety issues like domestic violence and overdose helps make communities safe. I also believe it's essential that we get underneath the immediately presenting safety issues to understand and fund interventions that address the root causes of safety issues. We need community representatives and crisis workers that understand how trauma leads to acting out. We are living in a world on fire. We are witnessing in real-time a genocide. Rafa, the last so-called safe zone in Gaza, was attacked on Sunday during the Super Bowl. We just had a first tornado in Wisconsin in February because of climate change. Wealth disparities continue.
Hi, my name is Nicole Baffodari, and I'm a Pittsburgh city resident. At least once a week, on the way to our son's daycare, we humor him by driving through the police station, rolling down the windows and letting him count the patrol cars in the parking lot. We've seen the idling cars and the ever-shrinking lot space. We've read about the incredibly fast growth rate of our wonderful city. It's clear to us that the police department needs new facilities that meet the needs of our community and the men and women who serve it. What is also clear is that the proposal being put in front of council is fiscally irresponsible, and our architecture firm is putting the city and our police force in an unwinnable position. The budget for this project is $35 million, a figure well-known to all building in the RFP stage. To bring forward only one proposal that is almost $15 million over budget without any alternative that matches the city's budget is disrespectful to both the taxpayers of the city and the police who are waiting on this space. The proposed square footage of this space matches the size of municipalities whose population is up to 16,000 people more than our own city 20-year projections. If some of the facilities at this location will be the only facilities of their kind outside of Madison, let's get some buy-in from other municipalities that they will pay for and rent the space, allowing us to recoup some of the investment costs.
Okay, thank you. We are done with the videos. I want to mention that we also received 35 more forms. They don't want to speak. They are registered only, 16 in support and 19 against the facility. So now, we are gonna start with the deliberation of the motion on the table, so I want to remind you that the motion that we have on the table is Option A, is the facility, the training bay, plus the shooting range. So, please, for the council member, raise your hands. Okay, if you wish to speak, okay? So we're gonna start with Joe.
Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment and add an Option C. My proposal is a construction of a police services facility, not to exceed the budgeted amount of $35 million, maintaining the sustainability features, and not including the training bay or the shooting range.
Second.
Who seconded that? Okay. So, any comments? Questions? So, you want to speak, Gabrielle?
Yeah, I'm just surprised that no one wants to speak. Yeah, I, I don't even know where to begin. I guess I want to clarify in terms of where I stand, just generally speaking. I've had a lot of conversation, a lot of feedback, and I don't support the training facility at this point. There's lots of reasons, but I think ultimately, the Pittsburgh taxpayers shouldn't be on the hook for a regional facility that addresses kind of systemic issues with police training. I've heard that there's issues, but that's, I just don't believe it's on the Pittsburgh taxpayers to fix that issue. And I think there's other considerations as well that have been brought up that I think are valid, but the, yeah. So I am against the training facility, and I think I've stated this the last time as well, that the process has been an issue from the outset, and the fact that we didn't get choices does concern me. And while I do support building a facility, because I think it's a necessity, I have concerns about the cost, even without the training facility. I don't quite know what to do with that. I don't know if it's $35 million. I don't know if it's, I don't like 44 either. I think that's too much, and at minimum, we should take out some of the contingency funding so that we can get some bids coming lower, but I don't know. I'm really torn, but I wanted the council to know kind of where I stood at this point in the discussion.
Jim?
I come at this from a different point of view. I am for the training facility, and this is why. Police officers have a lot of discretion, and that discretion is wide. They could do stuff that, you know, they have the authority that no one else has up into, including taking someone's life. So for me, it's about a thing of how do we control that discretion? How do we teach officers that although you can, you do not have to? How do you teach officers that doing the right thing isn't always the right thing? And that scares me, to be honest with you, because 28 years I worked for the Madison Police Department, I retired as a captain. And the people that I've seen come in, who never seen anyone like them before they appeared. And the people that I've seen come in, who never seen anyone like them before they applied, who have different views of policing, we really got to instill in them a sense of duty. And we really have to instill in them that just because you have a computer in your car, that you don't go into a marginalized neighborhood and start running plates, because I can do that, then all of a sudden, now I got the name and date of birth of an individual, and I could run that, and probably the person is not going to have a valid license. But we got to teach officers that, hey, that person's going to work. That person's got a family to feed. And sometimes that does not get, get through to people. We got to give officers that opportunity and train them that they need to value life. The way you do that is to put them through scenarios. And basically, you got to keep that in front of people. And like it or not, we do have to shoot. My friend, well, my friend. Okay, well, tell that to the person who had a knife to her neck at the Red Caboose, where somebody was trying to kill her, um, kill her and harm kids. Well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to argue with you. I'm just telling you what my feelings are. Okay? There's an expectation that we do take care of a threat. The people who were in a business in Middleton when someone got up and tried to kill people, and yet the one single deputy who basically went in and took care of the threat. We also have, everybody talks about this as being a training facility. My deal was, as a black man growing up in Philadelphia, looking at the article, the police abuse, looking at the number of black men who have been actually put into prison for years by misidentification, I want this police facility to have the best evidence storage facility, so that evidence is preserved because science and technology changes. How many black men have been exonerated because of DNA? How many people who probably could be exonerated have not because the evidence? I respected you.
Jim, one second. We need to, don't, we shouldn't be interrupting people when they're speaking, okay? Please, 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 let him talk, please. Okay, go ahead, Jim. Jim?
I, I hear you. I'm just collecting myself.
Okay.
We have victims also that need to be heard. Well, well, you know what? If you have something, I can't fix Manona. I can't fix Milwaukee. I can't fix Madison. If you have something that I can fix, let's work together to fix it.
Okay. Wait, please, okay. I, I understand, but when you were here and you spoke, we listened. We listened, we listened, okay? We listened, so now it's time. We listen to you. We are trying now to, we are doing the deliberations, so, um, please let the council speak, okay? Thank you. Thank you. No, the council has more time to do that. Uh, Jim, are you done? Okay, thank you. Jay?
I've got quite a lot to say about this. And I think I have enough things here to irritate pretty much everybody in this room. So, uh, but I have spent a lot of time thinking about this. One question I have for you, Madam Mayor, what is, what is your desired outcome from tonight?
At least to have some sort of building, you know what I mean? Like you guys, because we, uh, to build something, you know? You know, um, I don't know if the training bay or the shooting range, they're accessory, you know, but at least to have, to move forward with this project, because we need to move forward with, uh, also the renovation of City Hall too, you know what I mean? That's it.
So I think, I think there has been, um, a lot of questions about what, what are you trying to drive at with this? What, what is, where is your leadership taking the city on this project? Because nobody seems to know. Now, if somebody had told me, uh, that, if somebody had asked me, what could you do that would be the most controversial thing you could do in the city of Pittsburgh? Building a police station would not have been on my list. I would not have expected that to be a hugely controversial thing, but here we are. And part of it's because, um, I hadn't had enough contact with members of the community who have had bad experiences with the police department. I have, I have, I have been here tonight, I've listened to everything that people have said. I attended four of the public information meetings, and I listened to all the comments that were made at the end. And I mainly just listened because I wanted to hear where people were coming from. I got, there's, there's been a lot of disrespectful comments made, there's, on both sides, it's not just one side here. It's, emotions are running high on this issue, and I understand that a lot of people are terrified. I get it. There's also been a lot of hyperbole. We, the council got an email from a well-respected businessman in this community who described Pittsburgh as the crime capital of Dane County, which was the most absurd thing that came out of all the emails that I read. And his point was that we had to spend whatever money was necessary to make sure that Pittsburgh was not the crime capital of Dane County. Well, you know what? Pittsburgh isn't the crime capital of Dane County. It's a relatively safe community. And part of that's because we have police officers who do their job. So calling it that is just a silly thing to say, and the, the person who said that should have known better than to put that into an email. And I, I, while I understand that many of you are terrified, I can also tell you that Pittsburgh police officers are not here to kill you. And you can laugh. You can laugh, but it's a fact that they don't want to kill you. I don't think there's a single police officer on our police force that wants to take another life. In fact, since the city was, since the city was started, there have been exactly two officer-involved shootings, two, since 1983. I, I can only deal with Pittsburgh, all right? We will, we will see what happens with that. So I want to address a couple of things that have come out tonight and have been in a number of the emails that we received today.
Jay, Jay, before you do that, can we extend the meeting?
Oh, yes, I'll move to extend the meeting till midnight.
Okay, second. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries, okay.
All right. All right, so, so whatever money ends up being allocated for a police station, you can't just use it for something else. I know some of you think you can, it, you can't. You literally cannot use it for something else. The money that is being allocated for this project is coming out of the capital improvement plan, so it has to be used for a capital project. We can't go. I was silent, and I listened to every comment that you made. Please stop shouting at me. So that, that money can't just be used for other things. It's a capital fund, it can't be used for operating expenses, expenses. Now, we are in the process this year of building the hub, which will be on Traceway Drive in the northern part of Pittsburgh. The hub will be more, kind of a youth recreation center that we are going to build. We are going to build it. And there will be programming there, and this is one of the things that we are trying to do, to provide other options that don't require the police. We are, it's not very much, that's. Let me, I think it's a, I, Chad, what was, what was it? Chad, do you know offhand what the, the capital funding for the hub was?
It's, uh, it's almost $4 million.
$4 million. So we're, we are also, we are also in the process of working on a, on a teen center in the Jamestown neighborhood. So while some of you may not know what Pittsburgh is doing, we are doing things, and it just takes time, because you can't do everything the same day. What does disturb me is that many of the people, some of the people who sit up here, who are in favor of building a $50 million police facility, have been fighting against both of those projects since they were proposed. And that irritates me to no end, because to say we're going to fund a $50 million building with virtually no discussion about it, other than those of us who have some questions about it, that, I think, is a problem. When we're talking about these much smaller facilities that could do some other goods in the community, um, it's just, we have to have, we have to have branches that reach out farther than just one. Many people have mentioned tonight the school districts, the school buildings. Pittsburgh has no influence over what happens in a school building. We can't tell the school district, you have to put air conditioning in. We can't add additional school buildings. That's completely outside of our purview. Um, the, the, the way Wisconsin segregates the powers of school districts and municipalities is pretty much complete. We can't do anything with the school district. We can't even tell them where we think they should build a school. Uh, they get, they operate completely independently, and while I, I know that there are issues in the school buildings, um, it's just not something we can do anything with. By the same token, uh, school districts don't fund police departments, so that's up to us. Pittsburgh is, Pittsburgh has, uh, provided some land in the community for community gardens, but Pittsburgh can't create a grocery store. And the existence of the many areas of our community that are basically food deserts is something that's really bothersome to me. Um, and, uh, some of you, I know Tom will remember, when Flower Box used to be opened up on Fish Atrey Road, where the dialysis center is now, and that neighborhood had a grocery store that everyone there could walk to. And now the Post Road, Traceway Drive, Leopold Way neighborhood, there's nothing. And that is a problem. That's a bad problem that we need to address at some point, and because we don't own the land. So it's not like Pittsburgh is going to just go and, and demolish that whole strip mall. So we need developers to come forward and come up with proposals that will include those kind of facilities, and I hope that we get them. And we're doing what we can to try to encourage them, but it takes time, just like everything else. But don't think for a minute that we are unaware. Everybody who sits up here is aware of the food desert issue that we are having. Southdale, uh, one of our new neighborhoods, is another one that's basically a food desert. The only place in Southdale where anyone can buy anything is a, is a little store that has soda and chips, and that's hardly the type of thing, the type of food that people should be eating. So these are things that we're working on. Now, uh, up until last week, I had never heard of Cop City. Then we started getting, then we started getting emails, and I started looking into it a little bit, and I had a conversation with Joe, who explained it to me, that this is basically some facility in Atlanta. Because this happened last week, I haven't had time to really look into what's going on there. I don't understand the terminology. I don't know what this is supposed to mean. It's a police station. I don't, it's, there's not going to be vendors there, there's not going to be, you know, it's not a, it's not a city, it's a police station. I think that particular type of language is not helpful in getting your point across. Now, um, there is, the, I, the, the training, uh, the training portion of this building that was just, uh, there was just a motion to delete it from the building. I think if we build a building, it needs to have a training facility in it, even if it's just used by our officers. Our officers, this, this, I know the notion of a firing range terrifies people. I get it, I totally get it. But at the same time, we also need our officers to be trained in other types of, of activities to, non-lethal uses of force to try to, when, when something happens. I asked the, I asked the police department for some crime statistics for Pittsburgh, and one of the things that struck out, stuck out to me is the number of aggravated assaults that happen in the city. And that includes things like domestic violence and, and rape and other things that happen where if somebody's in that situation, if somebody's on the wrong side of that situation, they sure do hope a police officer shows up and does something. There's a, there's a, uh, I know that we have a lot of African-Americans that call the Pittsburgh Police Department asking for help in these situations. So, um, you can say that they don't want people to show up when there's a domestic abuse situation happening, but some people do. One of the other things that, one of the other things that will be part of the training is de-escalation training, which is, which is very important. Well, you know what? We're trying to do something. You can criticize everything, but we're trying to do some things. I believe, I, I believe that investing in the police department is an investment in the community. It's, it's not the only. It's not the only thing we do to invest in the community, but it's a part of what we do to invest in the community. We also have a fire department. We have an EMS that has paramedics. We have a library. Granted, the library was built in the wrong location. We have a senior center, and our senior center, center struggles with transportation issues every single year because it was also put in the wrong location. But. That's an interesting question, and I will happily have that conversation with you later, not as part of this meeting. We are going to have a couple of facilities that will reach out to teens that will be in better locations, and we have, we have a fund that has been established in our budget to start working on some affordable housing options. When, when Madison Metro was trying to cut off bus service to the Southdale neighborhood and to some of our other neighborhoods, I was out there. I fought with them to get the Southdale route reinstated. And this council, these people you see sitting up here, they unanimously voted to fund that bus route, because this council believed it was important. So while you may think that there's nothing that's going on. So, while you may think that there's nothing that's going on, we're doing a lot of things to try to invest in this community and make it be a better place. Now, the common council of the city of Fitchburg supports the police department, its officers, and its support staff. I realize some of you don't. I have a long history of voting for everything, not every, well, I think it has been almost everything that the police department has ever requested, including, and I know there was some upset about our K-9 unit, or maybe it was some other K-9 unit, I don't know. But I donated personally $1,000 to establishing the K-9 unit that we have in the city of Fitchburg.
You have that much money to donate? That's nice.
Yes.
That's really nice. I don't, I don't think anyone else is turned this.
Well, I donate to a lot of things.
That's nice to have the need to do that.
Jay, don't, please.
The rest of, this council has also voted recently to accept a COPS grant that would provide some additional police staffing. It was a unanimous vote. We also voted unanimously for some incentive and retention packages. And everyone on this council, except for me, voted to change the land designation across the street from park to an institutional use. And that's because I think this particular location is one of the worst locations in the city of Fitchburg to locate this kind of building. So, I stated a year ago that I was not going to vote for this proposed location. And so far, there hasn't been much that has convinced me that this is the right location. I still despise this location with a bloody passion. I have, so far, the only two votes that this council has taken regarding this facility has been about that location. And I voted against both of them. I was the sole vote to vote against both of them. Since this began a year ago, and I realize some stems of this go back to 2014, but this particular facility in earnest started about a year ago, I've been concerned about the process. I said, what I said a year ago, I still believe today. This building has become a freight train that seems to have its own momentum, regardless of what the council thinks. And it's attempting to run us over. Back then, we were still dealing with a $35 million budget. Suddenly, that amount has jumped to $50 million. That's a big jump. And there has been, there had been no public outreach before then, none. I was bothered by that. I'm still bothered by that. There was a limited amount of public outreach that happened before the four meetings that happened the first week of January, which was the worst possible week to run these kind of meetings. So, I was somebody who pushed very hard to have that citywide mailing that you all got, if you live in the city. If you aren't a City of Fitchburg address, you didn't get it. We sent it out to all the City of Fitchburg addresses. We had that card done in bilingual format so that our Spanish speakers could know about it. You are, the comment that was made earlier was correct. There should have been an interpreter available. And that is an oversight that I will try to make sure does not happen again. That was, that's a mistake. But we had those two meetings last week. And now, the council, just five days after the last of those two meetings, is being asked to make a decision to raise the budget by $15 million. And here we are. So, as an elected official in this city, I feel like this process has been rushed. I think it has picked up its own momentum. It has gone way faster than it should have. And I went on a ride along last night in the police department. And I knew what the facility downstairs looked like because, you know, I was on the council when this building was built. And I had gone on tours of the building when everything was brand new. And when we only had 15 or 16 police officers. And we have 46 now, I think. We have an authorized staff of 55. We have a lot of vacancies right now. And as a result, some shifts go unfilled, which probably many of you are happy about. But it gives some bit of anxiety to the leadership in the police department. Because stuff happens. And if you don't have anyone who can respond to it, what are you going to do? So, I would, my view on this right now is that this process needs to slow down. When Doug Morissette got elected in 1993, Doug Morissette and I got elected the same year, my first term on the council in 1993. He proposed building a library in 1995, which did not happen. And then Tom Clouder later became mayor, and he proposed a library. And nothing moved on it until the last of his six years as mayor. And so, these kinds of big projects take a lot of time and public input and a lot of grief. And I feel, you know, after watching what happened with the library, that there's, we are moving on this way faster than I feel comfortable with for $50 million. And I can't believe, I just still am flabbergasted that members of this council and even members of the community are not crying out about $50 million. That seems like a lot of money to me. I mean, I just have a little warped perspective of the world. But $50 million seems like a lot of money. And there should be a lot more deliberation about what we're going to do if we're going to spend that kind of money. No, I have more.
Because I have two more people.
Great. I do want to say that I appreciate having Jim Wheeler on the council. And Jim and I have had several discussions about the police department over the last couple of months. And he's opened my eyes to a lot of things in the same way that listening to public comments at these meetings has opened my eyes also. I feel like I've gotten a much broader perspective of how things are perceived and how things are actually happening. So, Jim, thank you for taking the time to talk with me. It's really meant a lot. But I do understand, while I can't understand, I'm going to take that back. I don't understand it because I'm a white guy. I don't understand the feeling. But I do understand that many African Americans and Latinos have some real discomfort with the police. Now, I'm going to tell you three short stories, things that happened in my life. You will love these stories. I have a friend. I have a friend, and she and I were out one night. And we left a east side establishment at bar time. And on the way home, she happens to be an African American. And on the way home, I was driving too fast. So, we got pulled over on Highway 51 because there's that section of Highway 51 that's 45 miles an hour. And I was driving significantly above that. We got pulled over, and she was terrified. And I had never seen that look on her face before. She was terrified because she did not know what this interaction with a police officer was going to be. Well, I got a ticket and was led on my way. And she said that would never have happened if she had been driving around by herself. If she had been speeding, she would have been pulled out of the car. There would have been a search. There would have been all kinds of things. None of that happened with me. Now, I don't know if that's really the case or not. But she was afraid of that. And sometimes fears are rational, sometimes they're not. But we, as a community, need to make sure that we're not increasing those fears. The other, the next story is another African American male friend of mine. And he was, he had just broken up with his white girlfriend. And we were, he was working as a bartender on the east side of Madison. And she came, she came to the bar and was visibly intoxicated. But she was screaming, she was having a fit. And I was going, because he had taken the bus to work, and he was going to take the bus home. I was going to take him home so that he didn't have to wait outside for the bus. And this woman laid down on the ground behind my car. Now, that had never happened to me before. So, that was really strange. And I got in my car, and I tried to leave, and she would knock it off the ground. So, I started the car. And that started blowing exhaust in her face. And she still wouldn't move. So, I said I was going to call the police. And my friend said, "Do not call the police." Because I do not want to be, I do not want to have that contact. I do not want to have a police officer here. I said, "Well, what do you want me to do?" And he said, "Well, we'll just have to wait until she does something." So, eventually, after having enough exhaust going in her face, she got up off the ground. And I got him out of there as quickly as I could. This is not a guy. This guy is like 6'4". I would not have expected him to be terrified in that way. But yet, he was. And he may have had reasons. I, you know, he and I didn't talk about it after that. The last incident, though, and this one was the most severe. And this one bothered me, it still bothers me today. I had been on a date with a black woman. Her sister called us while we were on the date. And she said she had ran out of gas on an exit ramp. And she said, "Can we go take her some gas?" I said, "Sure." Well, while we're on the way to her car, which was not in Fitchburg, she was in a different community, we pulled up to her car. And there were two police officers who had stopped behind her. And this was, I'm going to just say outright, this is the most unprofessional interaction I've ever had with a police officer in my life. But they were demanding that this woman get out of her car, all because she ran out of gas. And she should, there was no legal reason. There was no probable cause. There was no reason to get her out of her car. But the police officers were insisting that she had to get out of the car. So, I said, "Look, here's what's going to happen. I'm going to drive up the road about half a mile to the gas station. I'm going to get a gas can. I'm going to fill it with gas. And I'm going to be back here. This whole thing's going to take less than 10 minutes. And she's not getting out of her car because there's no reason for you to be getting her out of her car." So, we left, we got the gas, we came back. By that time, there was only one police officer left there. The other one had left. We put the gas in her car. And she drove back home, which was not far from there. Now, that was the first time in my life that I realized what my white privilege does. It was the first time. Because that made that situation turn out very differently than it would have otherwise. And that happened in 2018. And that changed a lot of things about my perspective on how we do these things. All of these were eye-opening experiences for me. And they emphasized to me that most African Americans are living a very different life than the one that I live. I have had some very serious issues with the process of building this facility. I think there should have been much better community outreach that was done prior to a schematic design being presented. And in some ways, I think we need to rethink how we do policing in the city of Fitchburg, probably everywhere. But I can only deal with the city of Fitchburg. While I have all those concerns, the current police facility is no longer really functional as a police facility. It's occupying two rooms, two levels in the basement of this building. And it's not just that it's showing its age. It's showing its capacity limitations. I do understand the anger that a lot of people are feeling about this. I do. And I agree that, I agree to an extent that the existence of police officers doesn't necessarily reduce crime. But I also agree that when a crime happens, somebody needs to be there to stop it. And that's what the police are trained to do. And that's what, and hopefully, they do it in a non-lethal way. As I said before, our department has a pretty good record when it comes to that. So, I, I'm getting to the end, by the way.
Okay, please.
After all of that, I am not, I am not prepared to vote in favor of this tonight. But I am also not prepared to vote against it. So, I am going to withhold my vote tonight. And I am going to, I'm going to hope that over the next several months, we come up with some better solutions than what's been proposed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, I have Dave, Gabriela, and Joe. So, Dave.
I'll also add, you know, that Jim Wheeler is who I go to for perspective on this. You know, Jim, much different life experiences than I've had. And when I, you know, he's my reality check. Make sure I'm, am I seeing this right? And Jim probably not even said that, you know, yeah, I ask him these things a lot. So, on this, this is outside my lane. You know, I'm an engineer. I'm not a police officer. So, I go, you know, my MO is to go to people that know this business. So, I talked to Jim about it. And also, I would tell you, I have many relatives in law enforcement, retired and, retired and active, you know, from local county. One works for, in the FBI. And I can tell you, none of them have ever shot anyone. You know, they are the nicest people in the world. And I can tell you, all of them, that would haunt them the rest of their life if they had to, you know, if they had to protect themselves or someone else, they would do their duty. But there is not a bone in their body that would make them want to kill someone for that reason. So, the training bay, I think, is essential, you know, to get training, stressful situations. I deal in a world, in a world where we talk about human performance incidences. And these are basically errors. And there are a number of ways you can root the errors. But the biggest one is training and training in repetition. Or similarly, when you're in stressful, you're interrupted situations. And that is the key. And to not give our officers that tool, I think we'd be, we'd be short-sighted. The couple of things on the building itself, I feel that there are some things we could change. And I don't know if Paul is still on. But, you know, I think the construction managers proposed some things like 8-foot ceiling on the second floor that could save us a fair amount of money. Moving the patio off the second floor. Not having such, you know, could get rid of or have just a smaller fence around the facility. A different siding instead of sole sourcing the siding. There's a number of things I think we could do that would lower the cost. I would say my fear, you know, that's a big number for me. It hurts me. But the same token, I say, if we don't put in this training bay, I think we jeopardize getting a grant. That I think there's a good chance it might pay for that whole, that whole thing. An option would be, you know, option would be to build the training bay, but maybe we don't equip it, and we could get a grant. And then we could finish it at that time. That'd be an option I consider. Jay, I will, you know, I think you took a little shot at me when you said, you know, Dave supports this, but he doesn't support other things. I supported the hub. I just, you know, I was against putting a roof over an outdoor basketball court. I think you know that. And I think you know that I've never opposed having a teen or community center in my neighborhood. I just didn't want to spend millions. I just didn't want to spend millions of dollars on, we have buildings where we could rent space and get it going quicker at a, at a fraction of the cost. So, you know, I, I gotta, I gotta throw back at you a little bit there, Jay. So I think that's, I think that is all I, all I had. It's, I think we need to, need to do it. The process, you can say what you want about the process, someone has to get something on paper. You know, and that's what, that's what we did. And, you know, you get it on paper and you knock it around some. You can say there was no outreach. We had the meeting in our neighborhood, I knocked on doors, I, I, you know, I have a large minority population. I knocked on doors, emailed, talked to all the residents. No one came, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not sure what I, what I do about that. I'm in, I'm involved with my minority neighborhood, I think you all know that. So I, I don't have as big a problem with the, with the process. Well, the longer we wait, so it happened at a county jail, now it's up to, you know, that price. Waiting is only going to drive up our, drive up our cost. I think we have a design that's functional, could be fine-tuned a little bit to reduce some costs and it will serve us well for the, for the future. I don't want to deal with this again the rest of my life. Thank you.
Next, Gabriel.
Okay, so a few comments about the, the training facility. The, if we remove the training bay, there is still like that DAT room, the, the sparring room in the facility, the fitness area. And there's also still like a community room space where we can have trainings, like implicit bias. So there's not, and there's not no training components of the facility if you remove the training bay. And that's also, and I understand that people are making these arguments about the need for training. We, the officers still train, they still have training opportunities in elsewhere in, in Dane County. And if there's a need for a regional facility for the outlying municipalities outside of Madison Dane County, then that's something that needs to be explored in a broader sense. And maybe it needs to be investigated with a feasibility study and put in the CIP and like, you know, bounced around and like, and like vetted more fully. So I, I guess I just wanted to make that point in terms of the facility, the training facility specifically. I also wanted to, I guess I should have said this before, but you know, I, I really appreciate all the comments from everybody here tonight on both sides. But I understand that there is a lot of distrust of police and I don't, there is, that's very valid and it's based in, in, in real feelings and, and real. And I, I don't, it, it's, it's very difficult for me to sit up here and talk about putting money into a police station when I understand where that, where that comes from. And I, some of the stories that were told about specific instances of police, our police creating a, a feeling of fear in our, in the neighborhoods in Pittsburgh, that's very disturbing to me and I would like to learn more about that. But I, I just don't think that this building, if we do pass it tonight, which I don't know what will happen, I don't think it's the end of the conversation because I, I do think there are, we need all of those things that you guys are, that people were talking about. You know, we need more youth services, we need to deal with food insecurity, we need more transportation. The transportation should come to City Hall. That's something that's absurd that that doesn't happen. We obviously need housing, more affordable housing. That's a huge issue in our city and around the county. And I, this building wouldn't be the end of that conversation. I think it would begin, it would continue the conversation for how do we address those issues? But then also, I, the, we should be exploring ways to police in different ways in our city. And maybe that word isn't policing, but so, you know, we have a halftime social worker in the Pittsburgh Police Department. And I've heard nothing but good things from the police officers about that experience. So I, I think we should make that social worker full-time and maybe expand that over time. I've been told that this building can facilitate more social workers, that, that, that the space is flexible enough to allow for that. I know there's discussion about expanding the Madison CARES team into outlying municipalities. I think that's a great idea, I think that we should explore that. And I also think that that could be facilitated in this building. You know, we will have space in this building. And I know the, the, the police will, will tell how difficult it is to train police officers. But there are a lot of calls that don't require an officer with a gun. And maybe we can, we can do something to support that overall effort to make our city safer and to make our residents make their calls be answered, because people do call. Not everything needs to be dealt with, with a, with a police that has the training. And we have community service officers, I can't remember that's the name for it. But a community service, they're, they're people that responded to calls to the police, but they do not have a gun. And so that, there are two of those in our police department right now. So I think we should explore those possibilities too. And I think that that's, that's something that we should, that I don't think this building precludes. And I think the other two things that we need to explore, but which are pointed out recently by our Dane County Supervisor Dana Pallabon was, you know, maybe we need to look at the data tracking to make sure we understand what's happening in Pittsburgh and get really good data. Because I know it exists, it's just a matter of collecting it and, and reporting it out in the way that we need to, to really understand what's happening in policing currently in the city and we can make better decisions. And then also more referrals to the restorative court. I think that's, that's something that needs to happen. So, yeah, those are a few more thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you. Joe.
All right. So I, I know several people that have commented, have kind of spoken to the affect of members of the council. I just want to let you all know that I tend to have a really good poker face. And I know, just kind of given my position, that, you know, I want to remain professional. However, when I hear some of the things that I hear, it does deeply impact me. That being said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about kind of a lot of different sprinkles of things, just to give some perspective. And some of those things are gonna be based on numbers. Because I think the, including the numbers is going to be the best way for me to step to the side of my emotions for now, because I'm going to be shaken with my voice if I'm, if I keep talking. So I know, you know, Cop City in Atlanta was mentioned. Talked about the potential price tag of that, I Googled it, it was 108 million. But when you think about that, the fact that metro Atlanta area has a population of several million people compared to a municipality that has 34,000, that's a huge disparity and a huge difference. When we look at our county jail that's being built, that does keep going up, we're looking at a population of a half a million people, spending a little bit over 200 million. So again, the numbers are vastly disproportionate. Milwaukee was mentioned. I grew up in Milwaukee, born and raised, still have a 414 number on my cell phone for anybody that's tried to call me. One of my best friends was one of the initial members of the Health Department's Office of Violence Prevention. So I believe in 2015, their office worked to develop a blueprint for peace. They engaged tens of thousands of residents during the community engagement that we're talking about. From 2015 to 2019, the murder rate was reduced in half. It went up during the pandemic and it stayed up for several years. But this past year, it went down about 30% from where it was the year before. And that's because they invested in preventative measures of violence. They spoke to members of the community, they spoke to people who were involved in crime, who were involved in violence, who were involved in gangs. They talked to hospitals, they talked to police officers, they talked to systems and they developed a comprehensive plan to save lives and they literally did that. And this has happened in other parts of the country as well. We've heard of the Kahoots program, we've heard of the CARES program. We've heard of things that are actually lifesaving measures and ways to be able to serve our community in manners that we shouldn't be asking police to do. Okay? A lot of times, officers who I've talked to do not want to be involved in some of the things that they're being asked to do. We should think about ways to be able to prevent violence, to be able to prevent harm, to be able to save lives. Now, I'm going to speak to this process, people have mentioned it before. But I think it's absurd, absurd that since 2017, we have had a plan in place. We did a space needs study. We gave a clear number for what we should spend on this facility. And within the course of a year, a design was presented at the end of the year. And we were expected to vote on it on December 12th. Just having seen it that first time. It was because of our council advocating for more meetings that we had rushed meetings in January. And when we said that those meetings were planned too far in advance, two more were planned in February. And finally, the community response came out because we urged the city to mail every single house in the city. That's community engagement. But that's not enough. That is not enough. Now, one thing I've learned in the past four years being on this council is that everything has a process. We've heard several members of this council, almost all of us, say that we have to follow a process. If we want to add something, if we want to develop something that's going to have a huge cost, we need to put it in our capital improvement plan. That didn't happen with this. There was no budget increase, there was a budget increase. It went from 25 million to 35 million. And then all of a sudden, without any input from the council, with four ad hoc meetings. Now, keep in mind, that ad hoc committee got a schematic in their first meeting. We were told that this is the option, this is it. That is not democracy, that is not transparency, and that is not acceptable. I fully support the construction of a police facility. It's been in our plan for almost a decade. We've agreed to it, we've said we're going to do it and we will do it. But the fact that something was added on, the fact that an amount of money that, that, that exceeds just the increase, exceeds any project that we've done in the city of Pittsburgh, is absurd. I will be voting no on any increase to the 35 million that we've already allocated. It's a matter of transparency, it's a matter of democracy and it's a matter of safety. The only way that we are going to keep our community safe is if community is engaged and community understands what they're doing. Now, people may have thrown around hyperbole in emails, in comments, emotions have run high. But the fact of the matter is, it is our role to, to understand policy in depth. We're the ones that sit in these meetings all the time. We're the ones that learn about these issues. We're the one that catches ourself up to speed on a salary of $5,000 a year. So we should know a little bit more than, than, than the public. And when we sit up here and we, you know, make just clarifications on things, it makes sense, but that's, that should be our job consistently. Another thing I just want to call out is that Supervisor Pallabon, she's a Pittsburgh resident, she's one of our representatives, shared with us kind of the, the multitude of conversations that she's been having with Sheriff Barrett, with Chief Barnes, with Chief Morales, coming to meetings, being involved in the jail project and really understanding these issues in depth. And one of the things that I agree that, that, that this process has brought to us is hopefully, a desire to be able to really look at the numbers, really look at the data and really understand what's going on. Because when we look at our police reports, there's data that's not quite as clear as other departments such as Sun Prairie. We don't have listings of how much time our officers spend in each neighborhood. We don't have numbers ready on our website that say, how many people do we send to restorative courts? We can request that information, but somebody should just be able to go on the website and look it up. And we are a safe city. People have said that time and time again, we are a safe city. I'm from Milwaukee. People get murdered like in the dozens every single year. And when we operate on fear tactics, when we operate on holding up shells of bullets in front of people, when we, when we tell stories of people getting killed by a police officer in other city with dramatic breathing patterns, when we have people tell us that, that, that this is the violence capital of, of Wisconsin, are you serious, business owners? That's fear. And it's not right. So again, I support the construction of this facility. I see law enforcement as one aspect of safety, but there are so many others. I respect the officers that I've had interactions with. They've helped me understand traffic concerns and violence issues in my neighborhood. I've worked closely with City Administrator Brecklin when he was a police chief. I've worked closely with Lieutenant Hardwick and I know that they are people that really care about their communities. So I, this is not a knock at our law enforcement officers. But this is a knock at a process and this is a knock at a bigger phenomenon, which is the fact that certain systems go unchecked in resources, in funding and in power, while others do not. And that's not right. We should give the same respect to our essential workers, to our essential systems and our essential institutions that, that create a safe environment than we do to the people that respond to those safe environments. And we should stop expecting law enforcement to do everything.
That's it? No, Dan? No, Bill?
Thank you, Joe, for those thoughtful comments. And Jay, Gabriela, everybody who's spoken tonight, everybody who's, who came out tonight and spoke truth to power and is still here at 11:40 PM. This is passion. This, this is, this is wonderful, I love this. Specifically regarding this process, I, I'll say, now, this is not news to anybody on the council, but I've been disappointed at every turn with, you know, the fact that, first of all, the council somehow agreed to one design without even realizing that's what they were agreeing to. And secondly, that that one design was, was given to the oversight committee on their first meeting. That's not oversight, that's a show and tell. And, you know, the, in 2017, we, we had put in $25 million as a placeholder for this. Adjusting for inflation, that takes us up to a little over 30 today. Add in a few, you know, two and a half million for some sustainability options and a little contingency, that'll get us to 35. That was the most recent number that everybody agreed to. And I think that's still a valid number. We can build a, a, a facility for that dollar amount. We're a growing city, we've got growing city staff, we need a place to put them all. We need a new building. I'm in favor of that. I've never been in favor of the shooting range. And I think training is important. Everybody agrees training is important. But training is a word that can mean many things. Classroom training, hand-to-hand combat, you know, defense and arrest tactics. Every time somebody tries to justify the shooting range, it seems to be with, with a scenario that doesn't require shooting a gun. And I'm, I'm uncomfortable with that shooting range and I will not vote for it, any plan that includes it. Even if, even if we can say that our Pittsburgh police are not going to abuse their power ever. We're, we're also allowing other communities, you know, per the, the two meetings last week. You know, neighboring communities, regional groups, national groups to come in and use our facility. I don't know who's going to vet those groups that are coming in. But if, if they're training with, you know, warrior mentality, that's not something I'm interested in. And I, I don't want that to happen. I don't know if I've got much more to say, but thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Bill. Randy.
Hopefully I have an opportunity.
I hate to do this to you, but I'm going to circle back to what, a couple of things that Jay had said or had forgotten. This council is focused in on housing. We have 8 million set aside for housing. This is the first time, I think, every member of this council agreed and voted for to keep three TIDS open, one additional year, so that that incremental dollar could be put aside for affordable housing, workforce housing, whatever that is. This council voted to add an additional headcount to administer that program. So, we are committed to housing. You may say 8 million's not a lot of money. It probably isn't in the big scheme of things, but this is Fitchburg's first step toward a housing program. I think it's significant. There's another program out there. Jay, you sit on that committee, HNI, Healthy Neighborhood Initiatives. I sit on that committee. And I don't know if Ari's out in the audience, but she spoke. They spoke earlier at Ari's on that committee. They do, that committee does a lot of wonderful things. I don't know what mayor, we have maybe $100,000 that we are going to be allocating in the next month for food insecurity, possibly some housing. I'm not sure if that has been resolved. But there's a lot of good things that that program is doing for nonprofits that are applying for those dollars. And, believe it or not, we do understand what you're saying. And I have to back up to one of, or several people that sat there, and they looked at me, and they alluded to, you'll excuse me, but they alluded to old men or old white men. Now, if you don't know who I am, this council knows who I am. I am a 62-year-old man, yes, and probably white privilege, but I'm also a gay man. With that, I can remember 40 years ago, 40 years ago, when I lived in Baltimore, I've had this conversation with others. But when I lived in Baltimore, I was harassed. I left my place where I lived. It was night time. I was going to a gay bar. And I was going to a gay bar in the dark of night, only because I was afraid to come out. Two police officers with their cars next to each other, having a great time, conversation, started to harass me, got out of the car, and harassed me. I continued to move on. Fortunately, nothing seriously happened. Now, I worked for the Attorney General of the State of Maryland at the time. And in those days, I couldn't even go to the Attorney General to make a, file a complaint. It was a very different world. But where I'm going with this is that it's all about education. And that comes to education to training. And I found out that that was so important when my first partner was dying. When I, I'm sorry, I'm getting very little emotional. It still hurts to this day. It was it was difficult because nurses would not want to come into a room to give an IV or to take care of him. But you know what? Some folks that stepped up and acted as my second parents, he said, "It's all about education." Don't fault them. Just try to express to them what is going on and what your relationship is all about. So, I believe that that training bay is important. I've had this conversation with former Chief Brecklin, Mayor Ratafrado. We've had this conversation about the harassment. I've had this conversation with police officers. And I do believe that times have changed, probably not completely. And I'm sure everything you've described is probably valid, but we've all been through it. I truly believe that it's training, training. Even in my own profession, as a retired engineer, training was so relevant, we couldn't get enough training. It was the success of that corporation. If we did not have the training, that corporation wouldn't be successful. And I truly believe that a police officer, if they do not have that training, they will not be successful for the city of Fitchburg. Thank you.
Okay.
I would move to extend the meeting to 12:30.
Second.
Okay, second. All those in favor of extending the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
So, thank you, Randy, for your comment. And I want to add something that Randy forgot to mention is that this council approved in the last budget two new positions for the first time in the city. One is a housing especially because we want to focus and prioritize housing. And the other one is community, a community specialist, because we want to continue investing in our healthy neighborhood areas and continue to invest in those areas that need more resources. So, we are doing stuff. You know, we are doing, we are trying to invest in the areas of the city where we have this high social and economic disparity. We know that. We know those areas. We know those neighborhoods. Maybe we don't promote what we are doing. Maybe we should do a better job promoting what we are doing, but we are working. We care about our city, and we listen to you and your comments. So, okay, so now, what we have on the table is, we have an amendment, isn't it? The option C is 35 million plus a sustainable option or included a sustainable option? I don't.
The 35 would include a sustainable option, so not to go over budget.
Ah, no, okay, no, it's it.
And what's that? And contingency, so it would include all of that.
Everything.
Yep, everything.
Okay. So, this is what we have on the table, 35 million. Okay, so, we are going to vote, and I will ask roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
Alder Allen declines to vote.
Alder Gerhardt?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Nay.
Alder Jettser?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
No.
Alder Udell?
No.
Alder Wheeler?
No.
4-3.
Okay, we don't have, this motion failed. So, now, we have on the table option A, isn't it? Okay, roll call, please.
Oh, can I, I'm going to make an amendment to, I'd like to try another amendment.
Okay.
I'm going to make an amendment to remove the training facility and remove $2 million in contingency. So, a facility without the training bay for a total cost of $42 million.
42, okay. So, 42 is, okay, one second, 42 is the facility?
The facility, no training bay.
No training bay, and?
And keep all the features except remove $2 million in contingency.
And remove $2 million from contingency. Okay. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
Alder Allen declines to vote.
Alder Gerhardt?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Nay.
Alder Jettser?
Nay.
Alder Maldonado?
Nay.
Alder Strassman?
No.
Alder Udell?
No.
Alder Wheeler?
No.
Motion failed.
Okay, so let's vote for the option A, so. Okay, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
Alder Allen declines to vote.
Alder Gerhardt?
Nay.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Jettser?
Nay.
Alder Maldonado?
Nay.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Okay, 4-3. The motion failed. So, option A failed, option C, and option D. So, okay, so my resolution is on the table, isn't it? No?
There's nothing on the table right now.
There's nothing on the table.
No, isn't option B still the discussion?
You would have to move to reconsider.
So, I need to move to reconsider, okay?
You would need a motion from one of you.
Yes.
I'll move to reconsider.
Okay. Okay, so what we have on the table now is option?
You need a second.
A second. I need a second.
What are we reconsidering?
A different option.
Yeah.
I don't know. We can't do it until we start to talk about it again. It's okay because I want.
Because this is the option. So far, everything has failed.
Let us have our city attorney comment on this.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So, Madam Clerk, can you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the underlying resolution has been voted down. So, at this point, the council can move on to the next topic on the agenda. Or in the alternative, if there's a motion from this council to reconsider the prior vote, that motion would need to be seconded and voted upon. And then, a possible new amendment to that resolution that was just previously voted down could be considered. I hope that helps.
Okay.
Point of order, though, so let's just, let's just, before we do anything else, where we are right now is we have $35 million in the capital improvement plan for a police facility.
Yes, correct.
And that's it.
That's it. Okay, so that doesn't mean that we can move forward with the 35?
I think the design team would have to use this information and determine what the next steps would be.
Okay. Okay, so we don't have any other option on the table, so the motion failed. Okay. So, we don't. Okay, so the motion failed, and then, what is it still on the, you know, we have the $35 million, and then we need to determine what?
I'll meet with the design team and let them know the result of the action this evening and determine what the next steps would be.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your participation. Okay, so. Okay, can you, we need to continue with the meeting, so you can have the discussion in the hallway, please. I will appreciate that. Thank you. Bye. Okay, so now, we move to Parks Commission. Who is going to, Dave, David? Is he still there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm here.
Okay, can you?
I'm momentary.
Yes, please.
Yes. I move approval, resolution R-0824, approving 2024 through 2026 median landscape maintenance contract.
Did Park Commission approve?
Parks and Public Works approved.
Thank you. And Finance Committee?
Finance Committee approved.
Okay, so what is this?
So, this is maintaining the medians, those places where they weed, they'll put some, put some bark down, they'll do some trimming. There's a number of times a year, and I can't remember at this time of night how many square foot it is, but it's a three-year contract to maintain these medians.
Okay. Any question, comment? All those in favor of resolution R-0824, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Next one.
Move approval, resolution R-0924, approving 2024 through 2026 median mowing contract.
Second.
Okay. Did Park Commission approve?
Parks and Public Works approved, Mayor.
Okay, Finance Committee?
Yes, the Finance Committee approved.
Okay, what is this?
A little similar, you know, our medians, the ones that have to be mowed. We have a certain number of mowings in there. And then, a three-year contract for this. And I believe it's the same vendor that we had used before. The square footage, you know, increase, I think it was, seemed like it was like maybe a 20% increase in square footage, you know, that was required on this contract versus when the previous one, who the city grow.
Any question, comment? All those in favor of? Ah, yes.
Yeah, a question for Scott. There he is. Yeah, so I noticed the contract says April 1st to November 1st. Do we have any official guidance that we give them specifically regarding no-mow May, you know, allowing some of the flowers for the pollinators?
Well, we don't, we just do weeding, Dave, which is with the, our, with the previous contract, we just do weeding of the medians. The mowing is on a schedule in which the mowing is needed. I believe it's a three-inch height that when it gets above three inches, then they mow. We don't do anything for no-mow May, though.
Okay, any other comment? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-0924, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Okay, next one.
Move approval, resolution R-1424, approving urban tree inventory work to include public street tree inventory, dolly conservancy, wood line, McKee and McGough Park.
Second.
Okay, did Park Commission approve?
We did. Parks approved.
And Finance Committee?
Finance Committee approved.
Thank you. So, what is this?
So, we added some extra, basically, we added some extra areas for the inventory. And this is basically a change order to cover that additional tree inventory, additional areas in the city. And it's, the work has been, work's been completed. Work's been completed already.
Okay. Any comments? Okay, Bill?
You're saying the full, like, all of the work has already been completed?
I believe so.
Okay.
I could be, I could be wrong.
Well, I was just going to.
Scott is on, but I.
No, you read the resolution, it said that the Forest Department would like to complete the dolly conservancy.
Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there, was there a process issue with this particular one and that either all or some of this work has already been completed?
You're correct, Mr. Brecklin. It all has been completed. There was a process there on my part.
So, okay, so one of the whereas is incorrect.
You could very well be correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so we need to correct that, okay? Okay, so all those in favor of resolution R-1424, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, so because it's already, what time is? 12?
It is Valentine's Day, Ms. Mayor.
Oh, yes, Valentine. Okay, I will say that we skipped that, the report from committees for our next meeting, okay? Let's go to standing committee reports. We don't have anything from finance personnel. We go to public and safety, and human safety services.
We, public safety.
We, uh, public safety, motion, we postpone the operator license, no, uh, I'm sorry, public safety and human services, uh, motion, we approve the operator license needing special attention for Victoria Graham, she came to the, came to the meeting and we approved her operator's license.
Okay.
So you'll need a second.
I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Who?
Madam Mayor, I was just going to suggest that if we're going to alter the order of the agenda or skip some items, that we take a vote on that.
So moved.
Oh, okay.
Second.
Oh, because I decided to move.
So let's, let's clarify the, the motion.
The motion is to skip all that stuff.
Skip, uh...
Tracy, do you have the information you need to accurately note this in the minutes?
Okay, all those in favor of skipping the committees report?
Original motion.
D to P.
I did, and Randy seconded it.
I got a second in.
From D to P. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, sorry for that, did. So now we are on a, a new business, so we have a couple of direct referrals, so, uh, Finance, Randy?
Yes. Uh, I motion to approve resolution R-2124, approving purchase of updated wireless access point citywide.
Second. So what is this? This Finance Committee approved?
Yes, Finance Committee approved. Uh, in short, this is our wireless devices that are on a five-year replacement cycle. Wireless access continues to play a growing role in our city procedures. This will help refresh and keep software up to date and help fortify our security posture.
Okay, um, any comments, question? No? All those in favor of resolution R-2124, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. So next one, um, I don't know, Randy?
Dave, Public Works, are you signing that to me?
Yeah. Why, why you go, Randy?
Um, all right. Motion to approve resolution R-2524, approving amendment to the agreement for engineering, reconstruction, and maintenance of County Trunk Highway D Fish Hatchery Road in the city of Pittsburgh.
Second.
Did Board of Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance Committee approved.
Okay, this is a good news, isn't it?
This is a what?
A, a good news.
This is additional money. I, I cannot explain it like Misty. You sure you don't want to step up, Misty? But it, but it is money coming back in.
Yes, it is. So as you know, the Fish Hatchery Road project is complete, it's a nice, beautiful road. As we're cleaning up the project, we went back to Dane County and figured out what their share of that project was, and it's more than what was originally included in the agreement. Um, so the two staffs have been working together to create an updated agreement, which includes additional money coming to the city from the county to reimburse us for those costs.
I didn't see the amount in the resolution.
Yeah, it's in the...
It should be on the referral page, I think it's the last sentence.
Oh, okay.
Oh, it's in the, in the amendment.
1.675 million is listed on the referral sheet.
Thank you.
And is that going to cash reserve?
No, but it'll go back to the CIP project.
Oh, okay.
In order to help pay for it. So I did not borrow for the whole thing, because I knew that there was more money coming in, so we still have to close out the whole project, but ultimately it will...
Why didn't we put the amount in the resolution? And it's just on the referral page?
It's there, it's at nine point...
It's on the, it's on the referral page, but it's not in the, um, resolution.
Yeah, it's there, it said that the...
You just have to do the math.
Yeah.
The dollar amount is listed at nine.
Subtract the nine point six.
1.675 versus eight million.
Okay, all, any questions? No? All those in favor of resolution R-2524, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Misty. So next one, uh, we need to settle the vote, okay? So I will ask roll call. Um, who's going to do this? Ball, Dave?
I'll do this, and I'll move approval, resolution R-2824, amending the 2023 and 2024 general fund and TID 13 budgets, or vehicle, building repairs, and Sine Road.
Second.
Uh, did the Board of Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance Committee approved.
Okay, so what is this?
So, is Tim Volker still up on? This is kind of, we're using money, Bill, maybe you want to leave. We're moving, we're moving money from a couple of other, several funds to cover costs, we have some additional vehicle costs, plow, uh, we had some, the fire station with the, um, inverters fail, um, you know, we had some additional costs, and I forget what the Sine Road one was, and we were reallocating funds to pay for those. Uh, Misty or Tim probably can elaborate a little more, a little clearer on it.
Yes, the Sine Road project was an additional $150,000, we're looking to have the TID number 13 paid for instead of city funds. Uh, this was an additional work, it's just reallocating, um, some of the work TID versus city funding. And then as Alder Herbst mentioned, uh, there was a couple expenses in 2023 that were unforeseen for fire station number two, so we're looking to move money from the Public Works Maintenance Facility, since we had repairs that came in under budget, um, in that facility. And then also, uh, we're kind of seeing an uptick in, uh, repair work for our Public Works Equipment Maintenance and Repair in both 2023 and 2024, um, since the city had converted some of the street lights from high-pressure sodium to LED, um, we saw some energy savings in both 2023 and 2024 that can help absorb the increased, um, costs for the equipment maintenance and repair.
Okay, any comments, question? Uh, roll call is to say, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Jetzer?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. So, um, I'm going to skip my mayor report, I just came from, you know, from my trips, so I don't have anything to report.
I move to skip Alder reports.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, so next is announcement, and our next common council meeting is February 27, and next, uh, committee of the whole meeting is February 28. Do we know the topics, Jay, for the 28th?
Well, we're going to be talking about the referendum again, and I can't remember, Chad, what did we put on that agenda?
Yeah, uh, engineering and public works is going to give an update on the 2024 street resurfacing project.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, uh, I need a motion to adjourn. So, second. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting?
Aye.
We are adjourning at 12:13. Thank you very much, everyone, thank you, staff.